of the Medford City Council, May 9th, 2023 is called to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
President.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Present.
Counselor Knight.
Present.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Present.
Counselor Singh.
Present.
Present.
Present seven, present zero, absent. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, accolades, remembrances, reports, and records. Two three dash two eight eight offered by Counselor Knight, whereas April 5th, 2023 commemorates the 18th anniversary of the passing of the late State Senator Charles E. Shannon, Jr., who represented Medford with integrity and compassion in the state legislature from 1990 to 2005. Be it so resolved that the Medford City Council hold a moment of silence in his honor, and be it further resolved that the meetings, the evenings, Medford City Council meeting be dedicated to his memory. Counselor Knight.
Madam President, thank you very much. And this is a resolution that I've been fortunate enough to put forward each year since my election. Charlie Shannon was a great mentor to me. The first big boy job I had when I was in college was working as an intern in the Senator's office, and that turned into what seems to be a lifetime in politics now, but I couldn't have done it without the guidance and leadership of Charlie Shannon. And Charlie represented the city of Medford with great pride and great diligence, Madam President. He served as our state senator from 1990 to 2005 when he passed as a result of a battle with cancer. Charlie was a U.S. Army veteran. He was a retired police officer, and he was a career public servant. When we look around the city of Medford, we see some of the things that remind us of the work that Charlie did. When we look around the Second Middlesex District, we see some of the things that Charlie did. Shannon Beach, for example, is named after Senator Shannon in honor of all the work that he's done in restoring Route 16 in the Mystic Valley Parkway. So when I think back to my time as Senator Shannon and what was going on in his office during the time that I worked there, I talk about things like marriage equality. We talk about health care for all. We talk about the Green Line Extension. These are great things, great issues that really made a difference in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in the residents in this community's life. So I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to work and learn from Charlie. Another item that we're going to talk about, I'm sure, down the line will be La Conde Skating Rink. And when the roof of La Conde Skating Rink was falling in, it was Senator Shannon, Senator Shannon who was able to secure the funds to be sure that La Conde Skating Rink was repaired, refurbished, and maintained so that we can still enjoy it to this day. So, Madam President, it's with a heavy heart that I offer this resolution once again, but it's something that I feel is necessary to be sure that we in this community don't forget somebody that did so much for us. So I ask my counsel colleagues in joining me in supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Counselor Knight. Counselor Carviallo.
Thank you, Madam President. Charlie Shannon was both a friend to my family and a mentor to me. Probably one of the reasons I'm sitting here tonight is because he taught me government is about people. And as Counselor Knight mentioned, my first encounter with Senator Shannon was when I was president of the Hockey Association and the MDC was going to condemn the rink. And when I couldn't get anybody to help me, I never knew Senator Shannon. I went to him, and he was able to secure the funding to keep the building open. That's why we have a skating rink today if it wasn't for him. But he was a good man, came from a good family. He did a lot for this community. And if he didn't get sick, maybe he'd still be around, as I said. But just wanted to say, my son worked for him for many years along with Counselor Knight. And yeah, yeah. So I'd say a lot of people that worked in his office went on to bigger things. So I think it's a good thing. And if we could dedicate this meeting in his memory, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Carviallo. Please rise for a moment of silence. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. On the motion of Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Carviallo, please call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes. Records, the records of the meeting of April 25th, 2023 were passed to Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Scarpelli, how did you find them?
On the motion of Counselor Scarpelli, seconded by Counselor Singh, Mr. Clerk, please
call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes. Reports of committees. Two three dash zero seven three, April 26, 2023, Committee of the Whole Capital Improvement Plan presentation. So this was an update from the, one of the consultants from the Collins Center on the capital improvement plan and the work they've been doing with this city. Do I have a motion?
Motion to join all committee reports and approve.
On the motion of Vice President Perez to join all committee reports and approve, seconded by Counselor Singh. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
I can, while he's writing it up, just say that the May 3 subcommittee on ordinances and rules was on the waste taller ordinance, which we reported out to Committee of the Whole and body shops and auto repair facilities. We started looking at the ordinances around making sure that there's safety on those. So.
Thank you, Vice President Perez.
Vice President Perez.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes, six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one absent. Motion passes. Hearings, two three dash zero nine two, legal notice, City Clerk's Office, notice of a public hearing. The Medford City Council will hold a public hearing in the Howard F. Alden Chambers at Medford City Hall, 85 George P. Hasid Drive, Medford, and via Zoom on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. A link to be posted no later than Friday, May 5th, 2023, on a petition from Bank of America and a 3850 Mystic Valley Parkway, Medford, Mass. 02155, for a special permit for use to allow a drive-through ATM in accordance with Medford zoning ordinance, chapter 94, to operate a drive-through ATM use at 3850 Mystic Valley Parkway, Medford, 02155, and site being located in industrial zoning district as follows. Use as a drive-through ATM. Petition and plans may be seen in the office of the city clerk, room 103, Medford City Hall, Medford, Mass. Call 781-393-2425 for any accommodations. Aids. The city of Medford is an EEOAA 504 employer by order of the City Council. Signed, Adam L. Herdby, City Clerk. Advertised in the Medford Transcript and Summerbowl Journal, April 20th and April 27th, 2023. Do we have the petitioner either in person or on Zoom that can give us a brief overview of the paper before us?
I am here.
Please give us a brief overview.
Bill Lucas with Bowler Engineering. Briefly, I just wanted to back up to the history of the project. We received a permit refusal from the building commissioner on January 12, 2023. The permit refusal noted proposed drive-through window for a bank use in a commercial two C dash two zoning district, which then requires a special permit from section F dash four, table use of regulations, item number F dash four. Again, we've also received a negative determination from the Conservation Commission on March 15th for the same project, and we have then made application with the City Council on March 22nd, 2023, for the special permit that you're hearing this evening. If I can, I will share my screen quickly and give you a little bit of a presentation in terms of where the project is located and a little bit of background for it itself. Hopefully, everybody can see that on screen right now where it says Bank of America, 3850 Mystic Valley. Great. Moving forward, the overall property is, again, 3850 Mystic Valley Parkway, which is the Meadow Glen Shopping Center, which I've depicted here in a purple-ish hue around the perimeter of the overall property. And then what we're showing on that lower left-hand corner in yellow is the actual project site for the Bank of America itself. That is on the northern end of the site, in a portion of just the parking lot. There's no existing buildings in that location as it exists today. A little bit of a zoomed-in location of that project site itself. On the upper right-hand corner is the existing Marshals. You can see the parking out front of that, and then you can see in yellow again the portion of that parking lot where we're proposing the Bank of America, which is pretty much underparked at this point in time. A brief survey, just in case we have any technical questions, I can come back to that. But really, the meat of this is the site plan, which you have before you now, which represents the proposed Bank of America, which is approximately 5,400 square feet in area. That is that rectangular grayish box. In the middle of the plan itself, we're proposing two-way vehicular traffic around three sides of it, that being the top, bottom, and the right hand from your viewpoint. And on the left-hand side, in that gray asphalt area, what we're showing is that is the drive-through use itself. There's two lanes there, both one-way traffic flow. So one would be for that drive-through use, and the other is a bypass lane if you did not want to participate in going through that drive-through. Overall, that is the project in itself. I do have, you know, some architectural renderings of the building here, so you can get an idea of what that looks like. But otherwise, I can just open it up to questions at this time.
Thank you. We do have some questions from the counselors. Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for the presentation. I know that there's not much parking in front of Bank of America as it is. I know that the traffic study showed that there's no traffic issues or concerns, but how many automobiles would the lanes allow for the drive-through? Because I thought, my first impression would be around the back of the building, but being on the side of the building with the lack of, you have handicap parking in front, I just don't want to hinder any lines that would hinder any parking for handicap accessibility.
Great. So just to give you a little bit of, hopefully you can see my hand circling. That's where the ATM is. From that point to the rear of the site, as you wrap around to the back of the building itself, it is, there is no parking immediately adjacent to that. So we are looking at upwards of eight vehicles that can be queued from that point back to before you then conflict with any of the proposed or existing parking that's on the site itself.
Okay. I know what the problem is, that the printing doesn't show. I was, I looked at it reverse, so I apologize. Okay. I don't see it being a problem. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, good. And there are questions from the council before I open the hearing. Okay. As this is a public hearing, we will open it up to anyone who would like to speak in favor of this paper. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this paper? Bill, you would be among those people. Would you, are you in favor of this paper?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this paper, either on Zoom or in person? Seeing none, this portion of the public hearing is closed. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this paper, either in person or on Zoom? Seeing none, this portion of the public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion from the council?
I would motion to approve. The only thing I would ask my colleagues, I know that when we do special permits, we ask for maybe a 90-day review. I think that it's just protocol that we've followed here. If we just would vote to approve and support this paper, I see everything is in order. I don't see the biggest thing in that area is traffic concerns. We don't see any traffic issues. And so I would think to approve and then, again, visit any concerns, if there's any issues in 90 days for a full review, for a full approval.
Thank you. Do you want to include the six-day comment period, or would you like to waive that?
I'd like to waive it if we can.
We have a motion of Counselor Scarpelli to approve waiving the six-day comment period and add a 90-day review to that, seconded by Counselor Carviallo. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll when you are ready.
Vice President Perez.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Present.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one absent, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Have a good evening.
Madam President.
Vice President Perez.
Motion to suspend the rules to take paper, 23 dash 303, 23 dash 290, 23.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Sure.
All right. 23 dash 303.
Yeah.
And in the order you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So 23 dash 303. Hi, man.
290.
Hi.
291.
Hi.
And 21 dash 301.
On the motion of Vice President Perez to take those papers, suspend the rules and take those papers out of order, seconded by Counselor Scarpelli. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, six in affirmative, zero in the negative, one absent. Motion passes. We will take, suspend the rules, take those papers out of order. 23 dash 303, to honorable President and members of the Medford City Council regarding food truck permitting. Dear President Morrell and members of the City Council, on behalf of the below entity, I respectfully submit to the Medford City Council the following request for a food truck permit in the city of Medford. In addition to the City Council approval, vendors are required to adhere to Health Department food safety requirements. One, Tufts University, dates, times, May 31st, 2023, 12:45 PM to 2:00 PM. Location, 51 Winthrop Street. Event, employee appreciation event. About the event, Dylan and Pete's Ice Cream Truck would be present for an employee appreciation event. Thank you for your kind attention to this matter. Sincerely, Brianna Longo, current mayor. On the motion of Counselor Carviallo to approve, seconded by Counselor Knight, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes. Going to 23 Petitions, presentations, and similar papers, 23 dash 290, petition for a common vittler's license by Charlene V. Bonn and, 265 Market Street, Brockton, Massachusetts, 02301, for Quench Juice Cafe at 430 Salem Street, Medford, Mass. 02155. Do we have the petitioner here or on Zoom to tell us about this paper before us? Is there anyone here from, yep, please come up to the podium and just tell us about what you're seeking. Yes, for, yep, for Quench Cafe, yes. Yep, just right up to the mic.
You don't have to be very, you don't have to be nervous. You don't have to be nervous. Only, we're not hungry, so if you're hungry, you should be.
Okay, so we.
Thirsty.
And are you Charlene?
Yes.
Okay, great. So yeah, just tell us a little bit about the business.
We are serving fresh, fresh food, juice, and smoothies.
Great. Thank you. I'll go to our licensing chair, Counselor Scarpelli.
Welcome. How many employees will be working in the business?
Two or three.
Is it, is it family only?
Yes, I mean.
Okay. I, I see, I see all the paperwork is in order. And before I move approval, I know maybe some other councils have some questions, but for one, one council, we appreciate when families come in and start neighborhood businesses like yours, and I think it'll be a huge benefit and a little competition on Salem Street for the juice, the juice wars. I know Bova just opened up, so it's exciting. So we welcome that. So I would move approval with any questions of our colleagues.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. Any further discussion from the council? So on the motion of Counselor Scarpelli, seconded by Counselor Knight, to approve, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. The motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're all set. You're all set with us. You don't have to, you don't have to stay unless you want to.
Run before they chase their light.
23 dash 291, petition for a common vittler's license by Jeff Wetzel, 11 Butler Street, Medford, Mass. 02155, and Ian McGregor, to a Fuller Street, Lynn, Fuller Street Court, Lynn, Mass. 01905, for Deep Cuts LLC, doing business as Deep Cuts Deli and Brewery at 21 Main Street, Medford, Mass. 02155. Come up and just give us your names and tell us a little bit about what's before us.
I'm Ian McGregor.
And I'm Jeff Wetzel.
Welcome.
And we are opening a brew pub and restaurant over at 21 Main Street.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Oh, we got some stories there. No, I think, I see everything is in order. I, I do know Jeff. People aren't familiar with Jeff's business. They've been a very reputable and upstanding business in West Medford Square with many people supporting him in that area. We're excited that he's moving to a location that's recently been closed. And as you know, when something closes in Medford Square, we often hold our breaths to see how long they're going to be open storefronts. Jeff and Ian have taken an opportunity to go in, and you can see the work they've done already. Very vibrant yellow door out front and welcoming everybody in. We're so excited. But again, how many employees, gentlemen, would you be?
Close to like 10.
10. All right, great. And the hours of operations, everything goes, you understand that the hours of operations are, and any extended permitting, you just come back to us and get things rolling with that. But again, it's another new business that we should be welcoming and not holding up. I think we see everything as in order, and we'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. Did you have something you want to add?
Just want to also quickly say, I think it's just such an exciting venue coming to Medford Square, and really excited to see what you're going to do with the place and the images and photos and schedule that's already been released seems really great. So I'm really looking forward to coming down and spending some time at your brew pub.
Spend money, too.
Time and money, time and money. Yeah, I'm going to sit there, but.
Counselor Singh.
I just wanted to add my voice to the choir. I live a 10-minute walk away, and my neighbors are already very excited. We were all talking about it. So we're very much looking forward to it and hope to see you guys around.
Counselor Carviallo.
Thank you, Ms. and thank you for opening up again. It's good to see when something leaves that you guys step right up and fill that void because, you know, with the theater coming into season now, a lot of people look for places to go, and hopefully that'll be a good new destination for you. Have you talked to the theater about going on their website? Because they usually advertise most businesses in the square. When people go on to look for tickets, they'll know that you're a new business there. And I have, I have frequented your West Medford store many times in the past. So are you going to expand the menu, the bigger menu?
Yeah, more stuff. And we're good friends with Danny Mather here.
Yeah.
They're going to try to bring in some smaller acts into our space as well.
That's great. Yeah. All right. Good. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Any, Counselor Knight.
Glad, Madam President, to see that been so successful, West Medford Square, that they're able to expand and that they're not on the El Tocuba opening schedule. Seems like they've made an announcement to go down there and things are moving relatively quickly. So congratulations, gentlemen. I'm happy to support the paper.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Knight. And I, I'm very, I was very sad to see you guys leave West Medford. I live over there, and we very frequent sandwich patrons, but I'm glad you didn't go far. So looking forward to it. So we have a motion from Counselor Scarpelli, seconded by Vice President Perez. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. The motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Excellent. Thanks, everybody.
All right. So now we're on to 21 dash 301, offered by President Morrell. Executive session pursuant to general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Purpose 3, Pending Litigation, Mario Centrella et al. versus BJ's Wholesale Club, Inc., and City of Medford City Council, Middlesex Superior Court, CA 23 dash 1044, to discuss strategy with respect to such litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the City Council and the President so declares.
We're going to executive session.
We have a motion from Counselor Carviallo to go into executive sessions, seconded by Counselor Knight. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, five in the affirmative, two absent. We will be going into executive session. We will return to the regular meeting after we come out of the executive session. We're going to go into 207. We do have Attorney Austin on Zoom and Counselor Collins on Zoom, so we will take them with us virtually. Yes, or we'll figure out a way that we're getting them both there?
Yes.
We have Attorney Austin's cell phone.
I do, yeah. Attorney Austin, can we call you? Okay, great. So I'll take my computer and go.
Counselor Collins.
Okay. Okay. So for everyone here, we're going to go into the other room. We will be back. We will return to regular session as soon as we finish in there. Someone else has to make a motion?
Motion to reconvene in open session.
On the motion of Vice President Perez to reconvene in open session, seconded by Counselor Carviallo. Is Counselor Collins on the line? Okay, yes. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes. The meeting is reconvened in open session.
Motion to revert to the regular order of business.
On the motion of Vice President Perez to revert to regular order of business, seconded by Counselor Knight, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Perez.
Yes.
Counselor Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Present.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes. 23 dash 289, legal notice, the Medford Community Development Block Grant Program, Program Year 49 Annual Action Plan Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Medford City Council on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Medford City Council Chamber on the second floor of Medford City Hall, 85 George P. Hasid Drive, Medford, Mass. and via Zoom. A link to be posted no later than May 5th, 2023. The purpose of this public hearing will be to invite the general public and representatives of public service agencies to express comments regarding the city's Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for community development and planning. The action plan contains the proposed use of community development block grant funds for the program year, which extends July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. The Office of Planning, Development, and Sustainability will be requesting that the Medford City Council authorize Mayor Brianna Longo-Kern, official representative of the city of Medford, to submit the annual action plan for funds and all other assurances and certifications to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city is receiving $1,423,649 in block grant funds. Call 781-393-2480 for any accommodations. Aids, TDD, 781-393-2516. Signed, Adam Herdby, City Clerk. We had a committee of the whole on this last week, two weeks ago, where we received presentations from the individual community service organizations seeking funds, and we, Director Hunt from PDS led that, and we have her on the call tonight as well. Before we go to Director Hunt, do we have any questions from the council? Sorry, yes. Director Hunt, do you want to give us a brief overview of the, I'm sorry, Counselor Knight? Hey, is there anyone else? Does anyone need a further explanation, or are we good with the presentation?
Good.
Okay, so as this is a public hearing, we will open the first part of the hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this paper? I believe I'm not, can you make me closer on you, Director Hunt? Thank you. All right, Director Hunt, going to you.
Good evening, Madam President. Thank you very much. As members of the council know, but I will share for the public, the city of Medford will share for the public, the City of Medford is an entitlement community with the federal Community Development Block Grant Program. That is, because we have population over 50,000, we automatically receive these HUD funds every year. It is a formula-based program, so the formula is based on our population size. We have already been notified of what our allocation is for the coming fiscal year is $1,423,649. This is the 49th year of the program. This is the 49th year that the City of Medford has received this funding. I have submitted a plan. As we discussed, usually the part of the plan that the council is most interested in is the funding of the public service agencies. But I will share that we also do other projects as well with this. We do housing, we do public infrastructure, we do physical improvements, we do economic development, and then we fund some planning administration costs as well with this funding. We submit a five-year plan every year, and this is.
Director Hunt, I did open for, are you in favor of the paper?
Yes, sorry. I thought you would ask for the presentation.
No, I think actually the council, the council is satisfied with the previous meeting, so I will just mark. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this paper? Seeing none, this portion of the hearing is closed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this paper? Seeing none, this portion of the hearing is closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve pending seven days.
On the motion of Counselor Knight to approve pending the seven, I think it's six days, the six-day comment period, seconded by Counselor Scarpello. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. And Director Hunt, does that fit in the timeline required of you by submission dates? That six-day comment period?
Yes, I have, I believe till next Monday to get this uploaded. I'll put all the filing in. Please, if there are any comments, make sure they get forwarded to me directly.
Great, thank you. So on a motion of Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Scarpello, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bears.
Yes.
Counselor Carriello.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Sam.
Yes.
President Morell.
Yes, seven, the affirmative, zero, and then I give motion passes. Thank you, Director Hunt. 22-514, offered by President Morell and referred from Committee of the Whole, an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 8, Outdoor. On the motion of Counselor Knight to weigh the remainder of the reading, I have a brief synopsis from myself, seconded by Counselor Scarpelli. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bears.
Yes.
Counselor Carriello.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Sam.
I think he briefly stepped out. He looks like he's running back.
Counselor Sam, you in favor of waiving, waiving the reading in favor of the synopsis? Thank you. President Morell.
Yes, seven, the affirmative, zero, and then I give motion passes to weigh the reading and give a synopsis. I'm pulling up the redline version, but in short, this is just a number of changes that were suggested by the council, working in concert with PDS and our Economic Development Director to streamline the process for having outdoor dining each year, things that include safe, improved safety and appearance requirements as far as positioning on the sidewalk, having parklets on the sidewalk to make it a little bit safer and more appealing and able for pedestrians to move through more easily in the space. Of course, my, great, I have a motion from Counselor Knight to approve for first reading. Is there any other comments from the council or members of the public for this paper? Vice President Bears?
I'll just note that when we met in Committee of the Whole, there was basically the main change here between what we met on Committee of the Whole on, and this is the inclusion of several items regarding insurance that Counselor Scarpello requested, and that the Building Commissioner and the Planning Department included in the ordinance. So that is all addressed, and I would second Counselor Knight's motion.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you, Madam President. And I know that one of the biggest concerns was making sure any of the outdoor dining areas are accessible for our handicap and, and mothers with strollers. And I think that having the inspector in place and being the overseer is going to be the important piece to make sure that all of those areas are protected. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Commissioner Fordy, did you want to add something?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So the only thing I would recommend for the council, respectfully, is to perhaps run, if this does get passed tonight, to run this in concurrency or to not enforce the provisions of this ordinance in full force until such time as the executive order has expired. Just recently, as you all may be aware, the state did extend the portion of the emergency order of the Chapter 53 Acts of 2020 to include outdoor dining. One of the reasons why this has been extended, I know from an inside, is that the requirements under the plumbing code are, you know, still being worked out. I think what they're trying to do is they're trying to exempt the plumbing code requirements from outdoor dining. Currently, that requirement is in place, and it would have to be enforced if this ordinance were to pass and be enforced in full. So I'm recommending that there be a delay in the. Wouldn't the executive order made by the state government supersede any local action? I'm not exactly sure on that, and I'm not clear. I would, I would say that if there was a caveat, and I would just, just read to you respectfully what I'm thinking about here in draft, it would say, this ordinance, in recognition of the executive order, Chapter 53, Acts of 2020, regarding extension of outdoor dining, will become enforceable upon expulsion of said order. Nothing shall limit the authority of the Building Commissioner to enforce and regulate portions of this ordinance for reasons of public safety. And so that's my recommended language. Only that way there, I'm not required to enforce these provisions because, again, without, without the mention of it, I think it's a little bit ambiguous. And I honestly think that, you know, by having this in there, it just basically just cuts off a concurrency period. A person can comply with these provisions, but again, my requirement to enforce these provisions will become effective upon the passing of this ordinance.
Unless the executive order supersedes the local zoning ordinance, which in my.
Well, it may. And that's why I said, that's why I mentioned in part. And so, you know, it's entirely up to you. I have the language in draft I was going to send to Mr. Herdaby's upon, you know, consideration. But again, that's my only suggested language.
Thank you, Vice President Bears.
Mr., thank you, Madam President. Mr. Commissioner, under Section 14-490 Regulatory Authority, you have the authority to promulgate rules and regulations necessary to implement and enforce the article. My recommendation would be that, once this passes third reading and is signed and is on municipal code, which could be a couple of months from now at the very least, that you just take the language that you have and create a regulation to that effect. And then, you know, it's your discretion to enforce. If you pass a regulation that says we will be going by the, you know, the governor's executive order, until that point, I don't think you'll have any objection from this council.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the council? Mr. Navarre.
William Navarre, 108 Medford Street, Apartment 1B. I'll be brief because I already outlined my concerns in more detail at a committee of the whole meeting. But basically, my suggestion is with regard to Page 10, we got labeled number seven. Outdoor dining furniture must be locked or stored inside during non-business hours. I just think that depending on how that's interpreted, it could be rather limiting and unnecessarily so. I was actually just talking with, with somebody, maybe to make a concrete suggestion, it could be locked, tied down, or attached if the concern is that the, is that the, the items could be stolen or become projectiles or something. And that would allow a little bit more flexibility.
Mr. Navarre, just for explanation purposes, from a historical standpoint, we had an issue like this that came up when Wendy's was looking for an outside dining facility. And what some of the concerns were was after hours, when it's closed and no one's in the facility. People would be using the seats and the chairs to congregate late at night, after 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock at night. So it was more of a nuisance value thing as opposed to becoming projectiles or becoming, what's it called, fodder for larceny.
All right. Well, I think that that's a concern. And I would hope that we could have, you know, 24/7 seating in the city without being afraid that it's going to cause, you know, a disturbance due to loitering and so on, especially on our major commercial, commercial streets and commercial squares. But I appreciate being heard out on that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? For discussion from the council. So we have a motion from Counselor Knight, seconded by Vice President Bears, to approve for first reading. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bears.
Yes.
Counselor Carriello.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Sam.
Yes.
President Morell.
Yes, seven, the affirmative, zero, and then I give motion passes, approved for first reading. 22-292, offered by President Morell and Vice President Bears. Be it so resolved, the Medford City Council, that we hold a Committee of the Whole meeting to discuss the council priorities and recommendations for the FY '24 city budget. Be it further resolved, the councilors submit their individual, individual ideas for budget recommendations to the city clerk by Friday, May 19. I have nothing to add to this. Vice President Bears, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Nope, just that, you know, I think, I'll add one thing, which is that I think we were hoping to maybe start these discussions earlier, but we are, we are where we are at this point, given that, you know, it doesn't look like we're going to have any more information six weeks ago as we have today until essentially a budget is submitted to us. So we have to go forward, just kind of with whatever the information we have is today. I'm making recommendations to the administration about what we'd like to see in the budget.
Thank you.
Madam President, again, to the public, I know that I've talked to some people in the streets and some residents that want to point fingers at different members of this council for the reason why the budget process isn't moved forward. I will let you know that Council President Morell has worked diligently with the mayor's office to try to get a schedule for our upcoming budget meetings. If anybody's familiar with what happened last year, we actually didn't see a budget. We vote, came in and the mayor had to come in at 1:00 in the morning to negotiate an agreement so we can get something passed. And I know that what I find a little nerve-wracking right now is that they're having open dialogue with the school department and the school committee about a very dire situation that's been publicly spread, that the mayor is looking to cut the education budget and look to let go of teachers. So that, to me, is frightening. And to the fact that no one from the city administration has even updated this council to let us know what is going on, this has been happening for over two to three weeks now. This issue is happening two to three weeks, and no one from the city administration has told us what's going on, either to calm everybody's nerves, that there might be rumors, or that what was sent out by the mayor's office to the school committee, that we are having serious financial issues. And again, we wouldn't know because we still haven't seen, here we are, middle of May, we still haven't seen financial paperwork of what's going on in the day-to-day role here in the city. So I know that people, it's easy to say, when you, when you run into some people to say, oh, no, this, this isn't the administration's fault, this isn't the mayor's fault, this is this group's fault, this is this person's fault. That's not true. Right now, we have a president, council president, that stands independently and works with the administration to try to get a schedule so we can be informed, so we can make the rational decisions needed for our constituents that have fallen on deaf ears. We've called for a meeting over two months ago to talk about budget concerns directly with the school department that's dealing with something very serious, which was security issues that was brought forth that we needed to support our school district, correct? And the council president, again, worked diligently with the school committee. The word came back and said the mayor was looking for a date, and then it fell in the mayor's desk. So again, I know this sounds, let's beat up the mayor. What this sounds like is logical information. So everybody understands where we are today financially in the city. This council doesn't know. We don't know what's going on financially. All we hear is that there's a letter floating around with the school committee, and they've had multiple meetings to discuss issues and concerns that, that we're in dire fiscal issues that are going to lay teachers off, that are going to cut the school budget. But again, here we are, May 9, I believe, and we know nothing yet, zero. No conversations with the financial director, no conversations from the chief of staff, no conversation from the mayor's office, no conversations from the mayor. And I want to make this public because I'm getting tired of talking to members of this community that just want to stick up for people that they believe in. Understand something. It's okay to, to look at an elected official and say they like them as people. I agree. I like a lot of people. But when you look at the positions that we're in, for instance, the mayor's position is the CEO of this community. That means they're in charge, they're the boss, the buck stops with them. And when we don't get information back, it's glaring that we don't have leadership that we need right now. Because I'm frustrated, I've said it a thousand times, I'm frustrated, and I'm frustrated with the fact that no one is telling us what's going on, and we don't know what's going to happen. And I'm going to guarantee you, we're going to sit here again on June 30, and we're going to look at each other like dummies and say, what are we going to do now? And someone's going to come to the podium at 1:00 in the morning and say, I found $12 million again. I found it, and I'm going to give you what you need. And we vote on it, yes, right? We wake up the next morning, and what happens? Here we are 10 months later. We still don't have an attorney for the city. We still don't see a facilities person that's actually working for the city. We still don't have the things that we asked for, the, the, the financial documentation from the financial director that was given to us from the previous financial director with the same exact software. We don't, we can't get it from this, this council, this, this, this leadership. So again, Madam President, I apologize for going on, but I'm tired of people on the street blaming fellow city councils and their party affiliation on why things aren't happening in the city. Things aren't happening in the city because of one person and one body, and that's the mayor's office. And believe me, it has nothing to do about liking the person personally, because I think she's a fabulous person. I've known her a long time. But as a leader of the city, I don't know why we're blinded and what's going on. The frustration is real. I'm a city councilor and I haven't talked to the mayor's office or the chief of staff in over a year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the big concerns I have is the $20, $25 million in free cash. Where did it, where did that come from?
A motion.
We, I think we made a motion.
Yeah.
We, we made, we made a motion a couple of weeks ago, and we haven't heard anything. That's, that's, that's a big concern over where that's come from. And that's, we've never had that kind of money in free cash ever in my, my 12 years in this council. So I'm still waiting for the answer on that, to figure out where that's going and how we can spend it, or if we're even, if it's even a legitimate number.
Thank you, Counselor Knight.
Madam President, thank you very much. And it's amazing. Here we are again, huh? Now, what was it, maybe, oh, 16 months ago, we passed this council in January, January '22. We passed a resolution asking that the mayor provide us very simple financial data, like Counselor Scott Belli said, the previous administrations, previous financial directors with the same exact software were able to give us.
One week.
All we want to know is we are spending the money on a weekly basis. That's all. Then we said, not even weekly, monthly. Show us we are spending the money on a monthly basis. Show us what account the money's coming out of and where it's going. The response we get from the chief of staff is, we don't have someone that has the time to redact that information. What needs to be redacted? The Transparency Administration, Madam President, remember that? Community, unity and transparency. I don't see any unity. I don't see any unity among the working people that work in this building, among the rank-and-file members of our DPDW and fire department who have gone without a contract. I don't see any unity with the teachers who took a vote of no confidence in this administration and the school committee. school committee. I certainly don't see any transparency when for 16 months we've been asking for simple financial data. Follow the money, where's the money going? They won't let us look. They won't let us follow the money, Madam President. I think it's shameful. I think it's absolutely shameful. It's a smoke and mirrors game. So when I think back, and we're talking about the budget now, and I think back to that night, the last day of June last year, and the mayor came up here and she, all of a sudden, money was falling out of the sky all of a sudden. We were, what was this council deficit, $8 million deficit? And then they found $4 million in the mayor's top drawer, right? Then they came in here and the council had some priorities that we needed funded, like an attorney, like an assistant city solicitor for the council. And the mayor stood up there. And you know what the mayor said? I will hire an assistant city solicitor for the council, I will post the job in September. That was in June. We still don't have one, the job hasn't been posted. Where did the, oh, it is posted. It got posted in February, that's right. And where did the mayor want to take the money to fund these positions? Can anybody remember? She wanted to take them out of the negotiated salaries account. The negotiated salaries account, the account where the administration puts money aside to provide cost of living adjustments for those same rank-and-file workers that she's beating on every day. We have a chief of staff that doesn't act like a liaison or a partner. We have a chief of staff that acts like a defense attorney, refused to answer questions, refused to provide us with information, refused to provide us with data. Now, when someone stands up before me and we talk and we cut a deal, and they make a promise to me, and they don't fulfill that promise, I call them a liar. That's what I call them. And after all this time that's gone by, with no assistant city solicitor, with no phase two of the zoning review, I think it's safe to say the mayor's a liar. The mayor lied to this body to get what she needed, which was a budget, so that she wouldn't have to talk to us for another year. Because that's the fact of the matter, right? That's the writing on the wall, that's the rationale. If we were watching this TV show at home, that's what we'd see. The mayor came in here, she promised everybody everything. Sprinkles were flying, falling from the sky. Everything was great. Two days later, she's down the Cape, nobody hears from anybody. And now here we are, scheduling a meeting for May 19th to talk about the next budget, when we still haven't even gotten the things we were promised from the last one. Typical of this administration, Madam President. Typical of this administration. I want a mayor that leads. I want a mayor that administrates government. I don't want a social media influencer for a mayor in my city. And I feel like that's what we have. It's always lead with a press release, go skating with the kids, go play rock, paper, scissors. But you can't drive down one street in the city. If you live on a private way and you call somebody to trim a tree or get a potter fixed, good God, it's like you're asking for a miracle. It's like you're asking for a miracle. We've asked the DPW director about this private way issue and how we can have equity and parity among residents in this community. The administration closes their ears, they don't want to hear it. When we say we want to take some of these public private ways off the rails and put them as public ways, because that might help us get more chat than 90 funds, because the city administration only appropriates $900,000 a year for road repairs, and that's money that's appropriated through our cherry sheet and not through city coffers. The mayor does not match one penny, not much, one penny in road repairs in this community. So when we talk about priorities, Madam, I mean, the meeting's going to be 24 hours long. But the number one priority that I have for this council and moving forward in the budget, going forward, is we hold the mayor accountable to her promises, to what she said she was going to give us. Because if she's going to lie to us, then she's going to lie to the people we represent too. And we could no longer be a steward for the taxpayer in this community, because we're getting treated like mushrooms, getting thrown in the closet, in the dock, in the dirt, fed fertilizer in the way of press releases, Instagram posts and Facebook posts, and expected to move forward and make informed decisions on behalf of the people that put us here. And then look in the mirror the next morning and say, we're doing a good job. We're not doing a good job, Madam President. We're doing a terrible job. We're doing a terrible job in this community delivering services. I've never seen the city look worse. I've never seen the city look worse. It was a miracle today when I drove around the Winter Street Rotary, the Rotary, which by the way, according to the contract on the Eversource project, is supposed to be reconstructed, which hasn't been reconstructed, and I mind you, probably won't be reconstructed because it's too close to an election. You got to show some results somewhere. We've been holding all the results in the result bag, waiting for someone to run against us. And now we're going to pour them all out and show you all the good stuff we're doing. If we didn't have an opponent, if Counselor Carvill didn't have the courage to run against this mayor.
Bring it back to council budget priorities.
My budget priority is an administrator that administers, a public administrator, not a social media influencer, someone that keeps their promises. That's all. Not asking for much. Someone that comes to work, rolls their sleeves up and does what they say they're going to do, Madam President. Is that too much to ask for? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Seng.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I think, last year was my first year doing the budget on the council, and I think Counsel Collins and I, but also the rest of the city council did learn a lot in that process about what the best way to handle the budget is, what questions to ask, what criticisms to levy. And I wanted to bring it back to this paper in particular and focus on the text of it. I think one of my biggest lessons from last time was that, that Committee of the Whole Meeting we had on budget priorities was very, very helpful in helping us get on the same page about what to negotiate for in the budget. And so I wanted to say that I'm very enthusiastic about this resolution in particular, because I think that it was one of the most useful things we did last time. And I do, I encourage people watching and people at home, I know there have been a lot of posts on Facebook and social media about what people want to see from the budget. I encourage people to reach out to us before, before May 19th with what they want to see in the city budget. I know there's, there's a lot of mistrust with, you know, people, people not being heard, not feeling like they're being heard. And I wanted to make sure that city councils one place where they, what they want to see in the budget is, is heard and that we're negotiating for them as well. So I wanted to support this paper and I'll second it as well.
Thank you, Counsel Seng. I do just want to note that I was speaking with the mayor today, and the hope is still to get us a budget by the end of the month. Let's see if that happens. Any further discussion on this?
Madam President, did you say which month? Was it this month or just a month?
Month of May.
Month of May, thank you.
So.
Madam President.
Counsel.
It's going to be a full budget.
I did, yes, I did say we need.
Not a piecemeal budget. Every night we get a piece of paper. I want to see a budget that I can take home and study it for a week. I don't want to be given the school budget on a Friday, on a Friday night at 10 o'clock and then have to vote on it on Tuesday.
Yeah, I did make it, I did make it clear, we would not be meeting on anything piecemeal.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on this paper. On the motion of, oh, Counsel Collins dropped off. So on the motion of Counsel Knight, seconded by, to approve, seconded by Vice President Baer, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes. Two-three dash two-nine-three offered by Counsel Knight. Whereas the motorcycle is a popular means of transportation for commuting as well as for touring and recreation, and whereas there is a growing need for cooperation among drivers of automobiles and trucks, motorcyclists, bicyclists and pedestrians who use our streets and highways to reduce accidents, injuries and fatalities, and whereas it is critical for all Massachusetts citizens to increase their knowledge of the rules of the road and the rights and responsibilities of all roadway users, and whereas over 900 motor vehicles are owned and operated by our fellow citizen bikers, homeowners and residents of Medford and tens of thousands more visiting and touring our city from neighboring communities, and whereas numerous departments and organizations are committed to making our streets and highways safe for all motor vehicle related transportation, urging and reminding drivers to check twice, save a life, motorcycles are everywhere. Check twice when pulling out and backing out from park positions, check twice when making left turns, check twice when changing traffic lanes, check twice for our fellow citizens bikers from Medford and visitors to our city on motorcycles. Now therefore, the city of, council of the city of Medford, Massachusetts hereby join with the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all agencies and organizations proclaim this should be our motorcycle safety awareness period here in the city of Medford, and wish all who ride an enjoyable and safe riding season. Counsel Knight.
Madam President, thank you very much. And I would defer to Counselor Carvill on this. He was a co-sponsor of this resolution, as he has been in the past, but I erroneously excluded him when I sent it to the city clerk after speaking with friends from the Massachusetts Motorcycle Association. It's Madam President. Thank you, Mr. President, former Mr. President. As this resolution says, Madam President, you know, there are hundreds, several hundred motorcycles registered in the city of Medford, thousands upon thousands of motorcycles pass through our community daily with Route 93 cutting right through the middle of our city. And quite frankly, the condition of our roadways aren't great. So these are things that do lead to situations of accident. You know, this is a resolution that I've been supporting now for a number of years. It's fitting, I first got involved with the Massachusetts Motorcycle Association when I was working for Senator Shannon, the first resolution we spoke of this evening. And through his office, I became very friendly with some of the individuals there that were working for a better Massachusetts when it came to rights and when it came to protections for motorcyclists. And one of the things that came out of this was motorcycle awareness period, Madam President, before us this evening. This is a paper that has been supported by the governor and lieutenant governor. They've established the Massachusetts Motorcycle Awareness Period. And as the weather changes and we see more and more people taking their motorcycles out, it's just important for us to be aware and cognizant of the fact that these motor vehicles are going to be on the roadway. We're not used to seeing them so much in the bad weather, but the good weather's here before us now. It's a safety issue, Madam President, but it's also a sharing the road issue. So many of us are concerned about putting bike lanes in and bus lanes in, that we forget a little bit about those of us that drive motorized vehicles. And those on the motorcycle are the most vulnerable when they're on the roadway. So with that being said, Madam President, I would like to ask my council colleagues to support the resolution and thank you all for indulging me with such a long piece of legislation.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counsel Knight, for bringing this forward again. Motorists on vehicles and cars, I'm on the road all day. You'll notice they're a lot more aggressive now than they've ever been. No one, no one will let you in or anywhere. So it's hard enough driving a car on roads, never mind driving a motorcycle or bicycle. So I think people, especially, you know, we have, we have many, many drivers now here because of our rideshare services, our delivery services, all these, all these companies that have sprouted up since the pandemic, and now driving around this city in droves and hundreds of thousands or more cars are now on the road than were ever here 10 years ago. So the motorcycles are in more danger now than they've ever been. So this is a good law and, you know, and people should check twice to, to make sure they see the motorcycle or bicycle. So I support this program wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Counsel Carvill. Any further discussion from the council? I'm going to go to Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. As you all know, I firmly believe the city clerk should be seen but not heard. But this is the one resolution that I try to speak on every year, and I want to thank Counsel Knight again for putting this on. Almost 43 years ago, my father was killed in a motorcycle accident not, not far from this chamber. And it's something I'm still dealing with every day. And motorcycle safety should be a top priority for everybody who uses our roadways. And I just, again, wanted to thank you very much for putting this resolution on, Counsel Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And if I could as well, I also speak. My cousin nearly lost her life on 93, clipped by a driver who wasn't paying attention, and now will live the rest of her life with a traumatic brain injury that has severely impacted her life. So I thank Counsel Knight for bringing this forward and raising this issue and noting this period of awareness. So on the motion of Counsel Knight, seconded by Counsel Seng, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes. Two-three dash two-nine-four offered by Counsel Seng. Be it so resolved that the city council asks the city administration and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation about plans for Middlesex Ave, and if there are plans to keep the new crosswalks. Counsel Seng.
Thank you, President Morell. So for context, if you've driven down Middlesex, there, there are a bunch of sidewalk repairs going on, and they've created a bunch of temporary crosswalks across Middlesex. And that project wasn't very much communicated to us on the council or to the public. And so naturally, questions come up. The DPW did get back to me on what the plans were exactly, and they did send me a file, so if anyone's interested, I can forward that. Essentially, we're getting, we're, we're keeping the same crosswalks, we're just getting improvements on the infrastructure on the curbs. We are getting at Middlesex and Riverside, I think we're getting lights, which is a good, a good improvement for that area, because it's always hard to cross.
Lights for the crosswalk.
For the crosswalk, yes. Which it's hard, it's hard to cross. Growing up there, you know, cars are whizzing by super fast and without lights, you don't know when you can cross and when it's smart to cross. And so that will be an improvement. The temporary crosswalks that are drawn between Riverside and Ninth will not stay though. But that's the update.
Thank you for that update. Further discussion from the council?
Madam President, if I may.
Counsel Knight.
I thank the council for bringing this up. And as we talk about Middlesex Ave, something comes to mind, you know, as the weather's changing and as we see the nicer weather get out, we see a lot of people like to do what? Go get their car washed, right? And we've had a lot of problems with the car wash down there in Middlesex Avenue. So on top of Counsel Seng's resolution, I'd just like to amend it to ask that the city administration ensure that the police department performs directed patrols down in the area to ensure safe passage of vehicular traffic. In, you know, case that there is an emergency down there, we don't want to impact emergency response times with the traffic coming out of BJ's. So in the car wash, it's a nightmare down there. And, you know, it's a pretty popular place, Madam President. So it's one of those things where we're a victim of a local business's success. So we need to take appropriate steps to make sure that the neighborhood and the residents and the quality of life are protected in that area.
Thank you, Counsel Knight. Any further discussion? Vice President Baer.
You can also apply the great axiom about, well, you can't fly a spacecraft to the sun, well, we'll just go at night. Just go at night, Counsel.
On the motion of Counsel Seng, as amended by Counsel Knight, seconded by Vice President Baer, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Madam President?
Counsel Carvill.
Motion to suspend the rules, take public participation, keep people sitting here a while.
On the motion of Counsel Carvill, to suspend the rules to take public participation, seconded by Counsel Knight, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, wanting to do public participation. Dear Clerk Curtisby, I'm requesting to be put on the Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 council agenda. I would like to speak about the sudden change on what services are provided to private ways in the city of Medford. If the homeowners of, of the home on private ways are not given the same services as public ways, then there should be a different tax rate for private ways. Lisa D. Fabritus, 32, Winford Way. Oh, Manny, I'm sorry, I can hear you. I was just waiting for your mic to turn on. It's on now, though, so you're good.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of many, if not all, residents living on Winford Way or on any private way in the city of Medford. For 19 years, I've been residing on Winford Way, during which time the city has maintained the streets and sidewalks, planting and removing trees, sidewalk repairs, snow plowing, and even street cleaning. However, I was told last week by Owen, the city engineer, that the city will no longer use public funds to maintain private ways. He told me the days of knowing someone or having family members who work in the city to take care of private ways are over. I told him that I don't know anyone, and neither do I have or had any family members working in the city hall. I'd explained to Owen that I have emails dating back to 2021 from Aggie, the tree warden, in the mayor's office, confirming that the city would cut a root from a tree that was planted by the city 19 years ago, that has been pulling up the sidewalk and breaking a wall on my property for the past three years. Owen told me that they, the city and Aggie, had made a mistake, and that the city will be following the rules for private ways going forward. He also told me he doesn't know who owns Winford Way, which is a private way, noting it could be every resident on the street or it could be a few people. He suggested that I spend $500 to hire a real estate lawyer to find out. I told him that it's the city's responsibility to know this information and to have it on record. I then followed up with the current mayor, who supported and concurred with Owen's comments. In summary, and before I start a petition from residents living on private ways to pursue legal avenues to resolve this, I would like to ask the council to approve a city ordinance confirming that all roads, streets and private ways that are accessible to the public be equally maintained by the city, since we are all paying the same taxes for these services. This will also avoid administrations from changing policies and practices This will also avoid administrations from changing policies and practices in the future. If, for any reason, the city is unwilling to pass such an ordinance, then the tax rate for those living on private ways should be reduced since the burden of maintaining streets and sidewalks on private ways will be on the residents and not the city. As a last resort, what is the process to change a private way to a road or street so that all residents can have the same rights and services if we're going to pay the same taxes as everyone else?
Thank you. I know we did get, the council got a response from City Engineer Ortella, which it basically says what Keith said to you. I can just pull out that part, but it did say that I've explained that the Department of Public, just so it's on the record, I know you already got this. I've explained that the Department of Public Works does not maintain trees or sidewalks on private property except in some extreme circumstances where maintenance of a public utility is warranted. Yeah. The city is working to update its website to include more information regarding private ways for residents. A list of private and public roads is available on the website for laws surrounding what is public and what is private. The bulk of the law is chapter forty, but there is also sections under chapter eighty-one and eighty-three having to do with utilities and sidewalks, and then it goes into other sections. So I just wanted to, in Massachusetts general law, so I just wanted to read what the council got from City Engineer Ortella. But I will open it up to if any counsel.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did you say that our engineer, did he put that in writing or did he say that?
No, he called me on the phone.
So he spoke to you that way?
He spoke to me, yes. Those were his words, yes. He called me because I had called and left a message to the mayor's office. And I emailed and called and left a message regarding the situation, of which I have copies of emails dating back two years ago about this. And yes, he called me back and those were his words.
That, the days of knowing somebody?
The days of knowing somebody or of knowing someone or knowing people who work in city hall, getting things done on private ways are over. And they're going forward, yes, that we're going by the rules.
On that point, Lisa, I think the days of anything getting done in city hall are over. The way that this administration's been running the city. And I thank you for bringing some of these issues up because they're issues that have been going on for a long time.
Counselor Scarpelli, did you want to finish?
I can't. Now, the area you're talking about, is opposing it a threat or will it pose a threat for residents?
Absolutely. Because this has been going off for over three years. I have pitches, I have emails dating back from then. And it's actually a bump. Again, this is a tree that the city planted. And my issue with this is the city can't pick and choose who's in administration to decide what they're going to do and what year they're going to do it, or it depends who's in office. And if you planted the trees, it's your responsibility to take care of it. It was a city's tree. When I said that to Owen, he basically said, well, I don't have no record of that. I says, well, isn't that convenient?
Well, of course, he has a record to that, but.
I think, yeah, and this email says it was, he has a record of it being donated thirty-plus years ago. But just.
Okay, but that's not what he told me.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, just, yeah.
So here's our issue. Our problem is.
Send this to you.
Yeah, our problem is we don't have a city solicitor that we can speak to because I find this a bother. I mean, it's dangerous. I mean, we also talked, as councils also talked about the, because we have so many roads that are private, we lose a lot of money that are directly assigned from the state and the federal government. Because when they look at Medford, it looks like we have X amount of miles of road because we have so many miles of private ways. So I think that's something I believe we brought up in a resolution to look into the process of taking back those roads and those streets for the fact that it would bring in more money to refurbish our community's, you know, dire need for the reconstruction redevelopment of those roads.
Exactly.
So I think that's something that, you know, we can revisit as a council later on, but.
And I will add, if I may, I don't mean to interrupt, but when the mayor called me as well and I explained everything that Bowman said and she concurred. And I raised these points to her and I says, about we're paying the same taxes, you know, it's not right. You provide the same services. And I says, oh, we should be paying a different tax rate. And she says, oh, you don't know how many private ways we have in the city? Like another, implying it would be a revenue issue for the city if we were to give, if we were to do a tax reduction for those living on private ways, if the city is not going to provide the same services as those living on streets. So.
No, I know it's a law. We know that. We know that that's the city's law, but that private ways, what we can do, what we can't do. You know, I have neighbors that live in a private way that pooled their money to resurface their whole street. So I know there are different rules and regulations, but I think when it comes to safety, I think that might supersede any issue or concern. That's why.
And we've been told that.
Yeah, we've been told that. So I don't know if it is.
Well, exactly that, but that's the point of it all. I'm aware of what the law states about private ways, but you just can't pick and choose. Even Aggie acknowledged this, that it was a problem. A few years back, I have the emails printed out. It was in the mail. But you can't all of a sudden decide you're not going to change it because of your changing your mind at the moment.
What we're saying is this council is supporting the fact to look at changing all our private ways to public ways.
That would be wonderful because we're all paying taxes and we all deserve the same services.
And I think that for your issue right now, I think that we need to have, you know, somebody from DPW to go down and look at that, that area, what you're talking about, and to address safety issues. And if it's safety issues, I believe that supersedes any.
Well, it's been on, according to Aggie and the city two years ago, and I even called the city, the sidewalk or the street department. They said it's on the list. It's been on the, my sidewalk has been on the list for two years. And every year I have to call and say, why hasn't it been done?
So maybe we could do this. Why don't we, why don't I make a motion that, okay, so what I'll do is we'll put a resolution in. I'll talk to the city clerk that will ask the residents to come up, the city engineer and a representative from the city that could come up and speak to safety issues. We can't speak on the law unless we, as a council, put something forth, which that might be something we look at. But I think right now, in the urgency of this issue, that if it's a safety concern, that we bring the people together in the resolution at an open meeting, so we can get to the bottom of this. Because what I don't want to hear is God forbid tomorrow, we have a neighbor that walks down the street, breaks an ankle, and you come back and say, listen, we told you so.
I do have it all in, right, and exactly that, and I thank you for that. But on a larger scale, I would hope the council considers a method for both the city and for the residents to be able to find a resolution so that the city, which to the benefit of the city, that we're all streets and you get the revenue from the state and we all get the same services.
And again, there's a catch twenty-two. We asked for this already. But because we don't have a city attorney that works with the council, we can't get the work done. So if we want it done, we'd have to hire KP Law that works for the mayor and give them thousands of dollars to come back and give us the mayor's response of what the answer is.
Well, maybe the next administration can handle this. Thank you.
Let's hope so.
And then just quickly to build on Counselor Scarpelli's point, just because I live on a private way and I've asked this too. I'm sure you've asked similar, is where I've been told that public safety, you know, why does my street get plowed if I live on a private way? And it's because it's a public safety thing. So I think some clarity on why is, I mean, you know, plowing is public safety, but trip and fall isn't. So trying to understand where is the line being drawn? That's Vice President Bears is dying.
Counselor Carvill put a resolution on this. We met on it, October twenty-fifth of last year. I'd recommend watching it. I hate to be the bummer in the room because I don't, I agree that it's not fair, but it's not the city's choice. We're bound by state laws, the Subdivision Control Act, as well as state laws around public ways. So I would really recommend watching the recording of our October twenty-fifth Subcommittee on Ordinances and Rules meeting. There's also a written transcript in our November fifteenth council records. Technically, the city can, there is a process, the only process the state allows for a city to accept a private way as a public way is if the public way meets the standards of the state for a public way. But the residents would have to collectively pool and pay to upgrade the private way to meet those standards before the city can legally accept the road as a public way. So that's kind of the catch twenty-two. In terms of the public safety issue, we had the discussion on it. The city, because there is public access to the private way, the city voluntarily provides certain public safety service, but it is voluntary. The city is technically under no legal obligation to provide them. The police department has also had a number of meetings that are recorded about parking issues on private ways. Residents on private ways, as long as they have the agreement of all the butters, and that's probably why he recommended looking at the real estate thing to see exactly who has the legal rights to the private way. If everyone agrees, you can put up speed bumps, stop signs, whatever you want. And the city can't say yes or no to that because it's a private way. But a lot of our private ways don't have sewerage systems, drainage systems, things of that nature, which are basic requirements under state law for acceptance of a private way as a public way. You know, I'm not going to justify the response that you got. I don't think it's right. I'm not going to say that it's a fair thing that the way that private ways are treated relative to public ways, but it goes beyond the city of Medford. One of the reasons, you know, we have a lot of folks on public ways waiting two, three, five, ten years on sidewalk lists as well. It's because we have a hundred million dollar backlog. And we have a report that says we need to spend ten million dollars a year. We spend one million dollars a year. And there's not nine million dollars to cut somewhere else to fund roads and sidewalks. So, you know, I think if we had a large community conversation around private ways and we're willing to raise fifty million, a hundred million dollars to turn every private way up to code, to bring it into a public way, that would be a path forward, but there's no path forward that doesn't cost either the butters a significant amount of money or the community a significant amount of money. And that's the catch twenty-two we're in. So I do feel for you. I think obviously if there's public safety issues, the city should come out and try to address them. But state law says that the city doesn't actually have to, and it's the responsibility of the private butters to handle it.
Well, I hear you. I've done my research and I'm well aware of everything you mentioned. But there are some discretionary elements in there that, as you noted in your comments, that the city can and not required to, but they may. There are a lot of discretionary decisions in there, and that's where I say, depends on your administration, what they're going to do at the time, who's in office. And as far as the city's lines, I mean, I think there's a resolution to all this. There's certainly ways to get it done. That's your job to do, so I'm not going to sit here and speak further. But I think this impacts a lot of people in the city. Because as like the mayor said, I don't know how many private ways there are, but she implied that there are a significant amount of private ways, which it means there are a lot of residents who are very interested in this fact. And everybody has sewer and drain lines. So I'm sure there's a way to make these into public streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Knight.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So ultimately, what I'm hearing is this ultimately started three years ago with a request to have a tree removed. Or a root removed, actually, a sidewalk.
Yeah, the city planted that tree.
And then for three years of time, you were told you're on the list.
Yes, and I have emails.
And then you finally, actually, you finally came in touch with somebody in city hall and Owen, they told you the truth after three years, right? Said, we're not going to do that, right?
He said they were wrong.
Yeah, they put you on the list and they kept telling you they're going to do it for three years. They jerked you around for three years and you finally found someone to tell the truth. All right, now, ultimately, an experienced public administrator, Madam President, for something like a sidewalk panel and a tree root to make a resident on a street that pays a lot of money in taxes very happy would be, as an experienced public administrator, go to Eversource and leverage your power with Eversource to do some community mitigation. Because that neighborhood has been under construction for the better part of five years. That's what an experienced public administrator would have done. And it wouldn't have had to elevate to this point where you are wasting your time coming up here to the city council because you've been making phone calls for years and years and doing emails for years and years and not getting a good response. An experienced public administrator, Madam President, would have reached out to their partners in government who are doing construction projects in the area and leveraged that relationship to provide community and neighborhood mitigation. Something that I've been calling for for a very long time. Something that I've spoke to the DPW commissioner about at length on a number of occasions. So when I hear these stories and these reoccurring themes and these issues that keep coming up and issues that we as a council have provided solutions for to the administration, but the administration does not respond to us, does not give us the time of day, does not provide us with the tools, materials, and equipment necessary to be successful in representing someone like Lisa. It's shameful. It really is. And that's the cycle that we're in right now. There are revenue issues, but ultimately what I'm hearing is I'm not going to do it because I don't have to. Right? I'm not going to do it because I don't have to. Well, for twenty-eight years, someone did it and no one made a big stink about it. The FBI didn't come in here and say, you can't be paving private ways, Mike McGlynn, that's against the rules. No one seemed to really mind too much when we were providing city services to the residents in the community. But it's when we see such a breakdown and degradation of the level of services that we provide and when we're scrambling and trying to figure out how we're going to make it work because we haven't invested the time, materials, energy, and effort, and we don't have the personnel, the qualified personnel. We haven't retained anybody with any institutional knowledge and we haven't been able to attract anybody. You get into a dire situation like this where the ship is sinking and now you have to make decisions and determinations like this where you're pitting neighbor against neighbor and street against street. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure most people don't know what a private way is and what a public way is. They know it's a green sign that they can turn down and take that street to get off of Winter Street to get to Woburn Street if they want to, right? Well, Wood Road, for example. So when I look at this and I hear these issues, I just find it very frustrating because a hands-on public administrator, someone that wants to administer and manage, would be able to address an issue like this. So I, I'm sorry for your frustration. I like your idea personally, that, you know, the same level of services should be provided to any street in the city. And I, you know, I understand that there are certain rules that we can, the city can also opt out of the subdivision control law if we want to. You know, but ultimately, right now, my hands are a little strong in a couple of different aspects, in a couple of different ways. One of them is because we don't have a partner across the hall. Secondly, we don't have the financial ability to turn the street into a public way tomorrow, right? So anything that takes place is going to take a long period of time to happen. If in fact it is going to happen. And from what I'm understanding, the city's not willing to invest that money. I think we as a council are, we as a council are willing to say, you know, this sidewalk panel should be picked up. This tree should be taken care of. Because if the tree falls down, what's going to happen? It's going to hit your house, right? And you're going to have a problem. If someone slips and falls in front of the house, who do they sue? Do they sue the city or do they sue you for the sidewalk panel?
Well, if the tree was planted by the city and you caused it, I would say the city. But again, there's, again, there's a lot of discretion here. I mean, the law can state one thing, but as I spoke to the state already about this matter, and there's a lot of discretion at the city. The law says one thing, but the city can do whatever they choose at their discretion. So if I'm paying taxes the same as everybody else, I expect the same services as everyone else. And I think, I don't think many residents who live on private ways are aware of these differences and what the law states. And I think if they are aware that they are not being treated the same and not being, have the same rights to the same services, I think you're going to hear a lot of loud voices.
Well, what else you're going to see is a devaluation of your property. Because you have the obligation.
Well, that's the reason for that request of tax deduction. Because we have to pay for maintaining our streets. So that's an expense that now we have to incur. And where are we getting the money paid for? I'm paying the city.
Already paying a thousand bucks a month. Already paying a thousand bucks in property tax.
If you're not doing it, then I'm not paying that money for FARA because I have to pay for it myself.
Right, right. So thank you for coming up and taking the time. I certainly share some of your concerns and it's something I'm looking forward to working on.
Thank you, Counselor Carvill.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for coming down. I know you reached out to me. I live in a private way. And I challenge you to come down my street. And I know somebody, me, I can't even get my own street fixed. So I don't know when, I don't know when the rules changed. Because in previous administrations, DPW always came down and they did whatever they had to do to to compensate the neighbors. So what if, I'd say, I mean, back in the older days, they used to have a program where the city paid for half, for the people of the private ways, city paid for half and the residents paid for half. And most of the residents didn't mind doing it because they understood. All those have gone by the ways that, you know, we talk about needing hundreds of millions of dollars in street repair. I guarantee you, if you went to most of the neighbors in the private ways, you said, would you be willing to pay half? And I think I paid, it was like eight or nine hundred dollars and I had a nice street. I guarantee you, if you went to everybody on a private way and you asked them to do that, they would agree and the city would have half the burden lifted on this. So these rules only changed when this administration came in. So they weren't rules before, but it says here on the Massachusetts general law that temporary repairs of private ways, a city may make temporary repairs on private ways, provided that a private way has been open for public use for more than five years. Winford Way's been there forever, as long as I can remember. So for Owen to say what he said there, should be ashamed of himself, even say that. He works for you, works for you and the taxpayers of his community. And that answer was unacceptable. And anyway, I don't care if you worked in the private sector, that was an unacceptable answer. Government should be here to help us, help the people, not, not, no shouldn't exist in our book yet. I say, I don't know what to tell you on this. I, you know, I brought this up like Counselor Bear said some months ago. And they're just saying, we're not going to do this anymore. I'm under the belief, I told you this personally, that if you're not going to get the same services that every other resident in this get and this city gets, you should not be paying the same taxes.
Absolutely.
Okay? There's no reason why they can't come down. It isn't that thousands of people are asking to fix things. Like, as Counselor May mentioned, these are solutions that could be done without causing headaches. So, I don't know what the problem is and why the rules changed on this administration.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Seng.
Thank you. I'll be brief, since I think you'll find that we're pretty unified on, you know, you should be getting the services that you're paying for. And, I mean, we have a problem with attitude in how we deliver city services. We have a problem with funding and meeting the requirements to even stay level with the bad quality of the roads that are out there and sidewalks. I mean, I'm with Counselor Carvill. I mean, we can't just face a problem and say, oh, well, we're going to put our hands up and give up, right? We need to be innovative with how we solve that problem, those problems. And, I mean, I was going to say something like, Counselor Carvill, we need to try to create a program to educate people living on, yeah. I mean, even just letting you guys know how to turn a private way into a public way, right? That's information. I'm sure you have to dig for that information, and you have to ask a lot of people for that information. You know, that should just be clear on the city website, or when you move into Medford as a homeowner, on a private way, you should have that information right in front of you. And we need to do better communication as a city to get to that point. And we need to be realistic about the, how we spend that money and how we find that money. We spend a lot of time on the council talking about smaller amounts, but, you know, something as big as fixing the sidewalks and the roads in our city, including the private ways, I mean, that's a huge dollar amount. We have to be honest about that. And honest to say, you know, we can't do it overnight, we can't do it tonight, but what's the plan? What's the plan to get there? How do we have that hard conversation about raising the funds that we need to get there in the first place? So, I'm sorry for your situation. We should look at this, you know, the discretion and try to find a solution for you. I mean, I'm totally with you.
At this point, I'm not here necessarily for myself at this point, because after doing more exploration and looking into this matter, this has opened my eyes to realize, to see that this is a bigger problem, not just for myself, but for every person who lives on a private way, which comes to find out is a significant amount of residents in this city. So, I don't think residents in the city realize what the situation is when you live on this, and the implications of living on a private way. And I'm hoping to educate everybody here who's listening, hopefully, tonight, and have people speak up, because if we're paying taxes for these services, we should get the same services as everyone else on the street, or otherwise, we deserve a different tax rate.
I think we need to be really transparent about what, you know, what our policies are and everything. I think that's like the first step of the problem too, right? I mean, you might not agree with the mayor's, the administration's position on an issue. We might not agree either, but we shouldn't have to dig to find out what that position is either.
But you can't flip-flop. You can't flip-flop on years of doing things one way, and then all of a sudden, administration today decides to do it another. You can't be inconsistent on services that you provide.
Yeah. And honestly, even if the mayor does that, right? It should be super transparent. All of us should know that there was a change in policy, and that way, you know, people living on private ways can come to City Hall and, you know, protest it or petition it or, you know. We should have that transparency in government. It's super important. So, I hope that you find a resolution to your thing. I mean, you're right. Much of Medford lives on private ways, and we need to, I mean, it's an issue that we haven't talked about frankly enough, but this city council has been pretty proactive on trying to find a solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Vice President Baer.
Just really quickly, like, again, I think we all agree that this is a situation that the city doesn't benefit from in any way, but I think the scale and scope is a little out of, you know, if we had, if all the private ways in the city became public ways, the state would send us like $400,000 more a year. We'd be able to plant like three trees, fix four sidewalk panels. I mean, it's, that's the issue. You know, the state hasn't doubled, hasn't increased Chapter 90 in years. The city's not putting really any money. You know, when we talk about paying for services, quite frankly, city property tax money mostly doesn't go to roads and sidewalks. Mostly goes to everything else. The only thing that's really going to road and sidewalks is Chapter 90, which comes from the state, which is tax money too, state tax money, but is, you know, 10 times less than the amount that we should be spending on roads and sidewalk repairs. And I'm guessing now that I think about it more, that the road and sidewalk analysis is probably only for public ways. So, the number there that's 130 million may well be 200 million if you add the 30% of the city that's private ways. You know, I think we brought up in that meeting with the DPW Commissioner, you know, look at our existing ordinance, what can it do? It pretty much goes to the extent of state law and says, the city, you know, the city council absolutely authorizes the city administration to fund the programs that Counselor Carvill was talking about. We could strengthen that ordinance even more. If the mayor doesn't appropriate money to that, it doesn't, you know, we don't even have legal authority to move money around to make or fund that, which is another fight that we're fighting. And we're fighting about a capital needs assessment, so that we know the amount of need, so that we can say, okay, it is 200 million dollars. If we did this amount each year, it would take us 12 years to get to a state of good repair for everybody. Or if it is 100 million to convert every private way to public ways, if we spent, you know, 8 million a year, we'll get there in 15 years. And, you know, those are, that's what we need to do, but those are the answers that we don't even have. Like, not only, we know the problem, we know we'd like to fix it, but the will to actually find the answer to the question, how much does it cost, and how much do we need to invest over what period of time to achieve our goal to fix the problem, we don't have that answer. And that's the answer we need. Then we can go to everybody in the city and say, hey, we have this private ways problem. It'll cost 8 million dollars a year. Do we all think we should spend 8 million dollars a year to fund that? And we can actually have that kind of community conversation. But that's the real issue, you know. This council could pass the best ordinance in the world next week on this question, and it won't force any single hand to appropriate a single dime to match private money to fix private ways. So, until there's the willingness to like actually, from the city administration side, say, okay, we fully acknowledge that we have this massive amount of capital need and operating need to effectively fund the city, and this is how much it would cost, and this is how much it would cost us to get there if we break it down over a long period of time, then this council's going to be passing ordinances that the mayor doesn't fund or enforce. And that's kind of the catch 22. Again, I hate to be like Debbie Downer over here, because I do think we should try to do something to fix the problem, but we don't even have the authority to move money around within the existing budget to fix one road, never mind 30% of the streets. So, it's a difficult situation.
Thank you, Madam President. It was Counselor Baer who brought up during the Capitol Plan Meeting that we're proposing projects. We don't even, we don't even know what our capital assets are. And it was, how are we proposing a Capitol Plan when we haven't figured out what our capital assets and what it is? So, we need to know, so we know where to allocate money. We're just allocating money to things in the sky without even figuring out where they really need to go. That's the real problem with this whole situation here. Not knowing anything.
Good evening, everyone. Sharon DSO, Circuit Road in Mass Ave, in Medford. Thank you for the time tonight. I had a related issue that has to do with safety on the roads. I do want to mention, Madam President, for one second, that I too live on a private way. One side of my house is on a private way, and one side is on a public road. So, there come to pros and cons when you buy the property. So, I do sympathize with you in similar issues that do come up. I wanted to ask a question for a few of us who I'm friends with, who they're raising the safety issue. We want to know the new status of the application of bike lanes. We heard that they are coming on Main Street in Medford and also Salem Street. We do have some problems with this. Number one, because we all agree, we hear it everywhere, it's even on ads on TV, exercise, exercise, you know, to lead to good health. We're all for bicycles. A lot of these bicyclists are very, very young. Some of them are older. They're choosing different modes of transportation to get to and from work, so it's important. Also, just to do shopping and also just to get exercise. We are very, very opposed to the application of bike lanes on a street like Main Street or a street like Salem Street. We understand that some parking spaces will be abolished. We also are trying to find room to even get by when cars are parked there during the day. Businesses are going to lose meter spaces. Those are three issues. But the safety, above all, we have no idea even when being cut off, because some of these bicyclists, they're great athletes, don't mistake me, if they cut you off, et cetera. We have no way of identifying that driver. And the definition of it in the state is, it is a vehicle. Bicycles are looked upon as vehicles. We're asking, is there a way that you can help us to promote registration plates again on the back of bikes? We used to do it when we were kids. Maybe Ricky would remember also. You had to get a plate for your bike. Every year, I had to come down, pay my little $5 fee, and have a plate applied to the back of my bicycle. It was kind of cool. We used to walk each other down to City Hall together. Not only that, if somebody comes around a corner, we're not saying they're all bad cyclists, they're a bad motorist, and they just come and hit a baby carriage, it's coming around to go around the corner to get another bike lane, who's liable? Do they have any way of personal insurance on themselves too? And if we are liable, some of those bikes are very expensive. Like I said, they're beautiful. Some of them cost 2000 and 3000 dollars. There has to be a plan. We're very tired of the state and local governments going ahead and putting, spending money and putting the cart before the horse. So, we realize this is a very considerate application of you to direct us in the right way to find out the answers to these simple registration plates, yearly fee, and what, who is liable in the case of accidents with bicyclists. Also, on a personal note, I'd like to mention that during the last couple of months, many of us know these two individuals who did pass, I'd like to mention their names. One was an icon in Memphis Square with his scally cap and very active at St. Joseph Church, Anthony Ranzino. He was very audible, very concerned about the city, and he passed with his returning cancer. We miss him very much at the convenience store in Modern Pastry. He was a great guy. Ricky probably knew who he was, and his family was a longtime member too. The other person I'd like to mention was a classmate of mine, Anne Bosamato Esposito. She was a longtime classmate of mine, wonderful woman. She was so special at MGH that the Cardinal said her mass when she passed. She sadly went to lunch with a client, even at our age. She was a big administrator at Mass General Hospital and a very dear friend. She took a client, I think he was a big CEO of a company or something, that was her job, to kind of lead them through the surgical path if they were visiting from out of town. And she took him to lunch, and she passed out on the client lunchtime. They had to rush her to the hospital, and she didn't make it. She passed away. So, thank you, Anne, for your years of service, and thank you, Tony Anthony Senior, for your friendship in Medford to many. So, I await your response on the bicycling concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for that. For bike lanes, that would be the status of those bike lanes, that would be the traffic commission. They tend to run the exact same time as us, so we're usually catching up after the fact. And then the registration, I would assume, is at the state level, since cars are registered at the state level, so it wouldn't be a city. So, I'd be happy to reach out to Representative Garberly about that as well. I cycle to work. I stop at all red lights. I do all the good things. A lot of cyclists don't. So, you know, I, you know, a lot of cyclists are opposed to bad cyclists and bland drivers as well. So, I just want to note that. Anyone else have anything that they know off the top of their head?
Does anyone know the status of the application of the bike lanes yet? Is there a date when they're going to be starting or anything like that? And I do have one or two business friends right on Main Street who said they can come down, they can attest every single day when they walk out of their business, a motorist is coming out of Duncan Donut's parking lot and either having a near collision with a cyclist, or something's happened to a cyclist, or they're cracking into a parked car. So, it needs to be addressed. So, you were suggesting that I just go straight to the traffic commission? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they, statutorily, they have the power over those decisions, and they would know. I saw Counselor Carvill raise his hand now. I don't know.
Yeah, I wanted to address it to him.
If you drive around the city, you'll see the temporary markings for where these bike lanes are going down on Winter Street, South Street, Haynes Square. So, there are going to be some, how would I say, this downfall with this. There's going to be a lot of parking spots are going to be taken away, especially in the Haynes Square area, which is a business district, and now, now there'll be a lot less parking spots than there were before. So, I think when that project is done, I think you're going to see them coming down before us about that. But the president is right. The place to go would be either the traffic engineer, which is Todd Blake, or the traffic commission to make your concerns.
Okay. And I thank you again for your time. We are not opposed to progress. We know things change, and we're very happy for people who want to gain exercise during the day and evenings. We also want to employ the fact that many of them, I've seen them in the daytime and in the evenings, and you probably share this experience, there's no blinker that's working properly on their bikes. So, it's also, you know, for their safety also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for public participation at this
Bill Giglio, name and address for the record, please. Hi, Bill Giglio, Winter Street. I'm calling to voice my displeasure tonight about our city council vice president using our city hall chambers this Saturday on off hours to let his friend from New Jersey use the Medford City Halls for his Boston book launch. This was a gross abuse of power. It should not be allowed. This is our tax dollars being misused. And as I stated, this is being billed as a Boston book launch and free to the public. I ask that this book, this book launch event that has nothing to do with Medford be canceled or be moved to a non-city-owned building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for public participation? Seeing none, we are under suspension. Vice President Baer.
Just that if anyone is interested in the issues of economic justice and the impact of hunger, homelessness, you know, lack of food security, mental health, drug use and substance use, and they'd like to have a community conversation about the policies that we can implement to address those things as a community, there will be a book discussion in the city council chambers at 5:00 PM on Saturday, and I welcome anyone to attend. Thank you.
Again, we are under suspension still. Someone send me somewhere. Would you like to go back to regular order of business?
Revert.
Because I'm at the end of a, fill out a number of items, but if you have the votes. I believe we have a motion from Vice President Baer to revert to the regular order of business. Motion of Vice President Baer to revert to regular order of business, second by Counselor Seng. All is in favor. All is opposed. Motion passes. 23-295, I think is the right place. Offered by Counselor Seng. Be it so resolved that the city council asks the city administration for updates on fixing the potholes by George Street and Main Street.
Thank you, President Morel. I think this is a pretty straightforward paper. It's a heavily trafficked road. I happen to live close-ish, and so I see the cars going by all the time. I walk by all the time. There are potholes in the middle of the road. And so, I think it'd be good to ask for updates about resurfacing.
Thank you, Counselor Seng. Any further discussion? The motion of Counselor Seng, second by Vice President Baer, is all is in favor. All is opposed. Motion passes. 23-296, offered by Counselor Seng. DSR resolved that the city council asks the city administration for updates on fixing the potholes on Boston Ave between College Ave and Harvard Street. Counselor Seng.
Again, I think this is a pretty straightforward paper, very similar situation on Boston Ave between College and Harvard Street, closer to the solvable line.
Further discussion on the motion of Counselor Seng, second by Vice President Baer, is all is in favor. All is opposed. Motion passes. 23-297, offered by Counselor Seng. Be it so resolved that the city council asks the city administration, Elections Department, and Diversity Equity and Inclusion Department to identify, analyze, and address the issues that may affect civic and political participation by immigrant communities in Medford. Counselor Seng.
Thank you. This is in light of the after-election report we got last week from the election commission. You know, they're doing a lot of work, but I think an important thing going, they're doing a lot of important work when it comes to reaching out to populations in Medford, communities in Medford that aren't registered to vote or vote at the rates that we see for other groups in Medford. And they do have the right to vote and participate in our politics, I think. And given that there's an election And given that there's an election coming up this fall, and so the city elections tend to be elections where immigrant communities don't participate as high as they perhaps should. It would be great for them to look at it, and I know the Elections Commission is close with the Diversity Department as well, and so they could collaborate on it.
Thank you, Counselor Seng. Further discussion on the motion of Counselor Seng, seconded by Vice and Bears, all is in favor. All is opposed, motion passes. Two three dash two nine eight, offered by Counselor Seng. Whereas many residents of the city council have expressed skepticism about the representativeness and IT security of Google form responses. Be it so resolved that the city council asks the city administration to consider upgrading to professional community feedback and civic engagement software that is specifically designed for municipalities to receive greater amount of feedback, ensure that responses are more representative of the whole population, find points of consensus and help residents understand policy decisions our city must make, Counselor Seng.
I very much appreciate the administration's attempts to get more feedback for programs and policies and how to spend money. But I think when, when we've had that ARPA presentation, different presentations, I know this came up with the dog park situation as well. Those of us in the council have brought up a lot of questions with if we should really be making decisions by Google forms, given that they are not representative of our city at all. They leave out, they leave out a lot of people who aren't online, on using their computers all the time. And, you know, this kind of realm of getting community feedback and public participation, creating surveys, it's actually a very well-developed realm in city governments and municipal software and technology. And I just wanted to put forward that we explore getting some, if we are going to use Google forms, and I think it is good to get public feedback and a pulse on the public, we do it right. I think, I think a bunch of neighboring cities have invested in such technology, and actually the benefits of the technology are more than just getting feedback. There's a lot of public education that can go on with it, a lot of considering more nuanced viewpoints, a greater number of viewpoints and finding consensus between very different viewpoints as well. There's, again, this is a very well-developed part of technology that I'd be happy to take advantage of. But again, this is just for us to explore instead of just putting out a Google form out there and leaving us vulnerable to potential IT security questions and questions about whether that form is actually representative of the population's view.
Thank you. Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I think Counsel Seng appreciates it, brings forth it. First of all, it's frightening is we don't have an IT department. That's the first thing. First thing is that we have someone that's working, I believe per diem or on a contracted basis, but we don't have an IT department, which is frightening because we can't get the answers we need. And again, I appreciate what you're saying because people have also told me in situations that the city has gone out and asked for different feedback, we have a group of educated Medford residents that send their feedback, and with those numbers, our city officials gather that information, which that's all they have, and they have to make the best decisions from those, that group. What we realize is that that group doesn't truly identify the true demographics of our community. I think if you would probably look at most of the surveys that go out and that are replied to, are really from one administrator that works her tail off to do the best she can to get the information to the people that are directly involved because they're interested with her. And it's, it's no fault to her, she's doing the best she can, she's doing her position. But I look at the rest of the city saying that when we have issues like bike lanes, for instance, when things go out, who responds? The Bicycle Commission, people in the bicycle world, right? And that's what the demographic looks like, what's being said. And it's no different than when you're trying to put a project in an area of low income and when the people surveyed are the wealthy homeowners in that area that want that development or they could sell their homes for big money, and it just doesn't get to the people that really live in the community and have no other option but to live in that area. So I applaud this, this resolution, and I think this is, this is a huge problem when you look at a disparaging lack of true community involvement because we don't have the tools in place to get it out in, you know, maybe different languages or reaching different demographics, or, again, so again, I, I rest with that. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carvialo.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Seng, putting this on there, and Counselor Scott Hilli also brought to the point. You know, not everybody has access to computers. In fact, a survey done by the library was one of the biggest things they had there was people, the amount of people that go there for computer access. I think it's time that every department and all these things, we need to start getting people back into meeting in the building and then have public meetings. Again, we look out every week and we sit here and look at an empty room all the time. You have meetings. We have a committee, no one's here, everyone's at home. As Counselor Scott Hilli mentioned, it's the same group of people that are responding to the surveys and those other things. It's, it's time we get back to meeting in city hall or have public meetings where people meet in person. You know, the Zoom is good and everything, it's fine, but there's no participation anymore. There's no face-to-face interaction with anybody. I mean, a lot of people don't like, I personally don't like going on Zoom meetings because there's no, as I say, there's no interaction. As I say, this is one of the, probably one of the bad things that come out of, come out of the COVID was everybody, everybody now lives in another world, and not, and not everybody has access to that other world of Zoom and computers. So though I applaud this, I, I think that the governments, not just here everywhere, needs to start getting back into the building and having, having public meetings where there are people who can interact with each other.
Thank you, Counselor Carvialo. Any further discussion? On the motion of Counsel, oh, sorry, do you see, oh, no, okay, we just lost that hand. On the motion of Counselor Seng, seconded by Vice and Bears, all is in favor. All is opposed, well, come on, all is in favor, all right, all is opposed, motion passes. Two three dash two nine nine, offered by Counselor Carvialo. Be it so resolved that the Medford City Council have the new facilities manager look into the ventilation blower in the Alden Chambers. The sound from the fan makes it difficult for people with hearing disabilities to hear the conversation from the council, Counselor Carvialo.
The key's not good enough for you?
What?
Thank you, Madam President. This is, this is one of the few nights that I'm able to hear. And I think for those of us who sit at this side of the room here, it's literally next to impossible to hear when that blower goes off. Right now, it didn't go out tonight because we, we have neither the air conditioning nor the heat on. But I say.
Counselor Bears turned the fan off.
Yeah.
And don't turn it back on.
But, um.
I'm not the cat's out of bed.
I have a hearing disability, and I have hearing, I can't wear them in here because when that blower goes off, it just makes you go crazy. I, you know, I assume we have a, we have a facilities manager, I don't, you know, it could be him for all we know, I don't. I have, I have no idea who the person is or what he, what he or she does. But it'd be nice if someone could look at this and so the people that are at least in this side of the room can hear conversations with our other counselors.
Thank you, Counselor Carvialo. Vice and Bears.
I just want to say, I have had a conversation with the new facilities manager.
Oh, you met him?
I met him. He is looking at the space, the lighting, curtains, et cetera. I'm sure that if we put a resolution on it, be happy to co-sponsor with you, he'd come down and talk to us. What he's probably going to say is, I need money, and then, you know, we're back across the hall again. So, thank you.
Well, I say, I would like him to come down and maybe, maybe offer a solution to so people with disabilities can hear. Again, there's no one, there's no one in the room, but in past days, we used to have to hand out little packs for the people with hearing disabilities. So I say, I don't know if they even exist anymore.
Thank you. Counselor Knight.
So what I'm understanding is that Counselor Bears has spoken with the facility manager. The facility manager says he has control over the room. We had residents in the community that had spoken with the mayor about the room, and the mayor said that the administration has nothing to do with the room. I was just trying to figure out what's going on. This place is like Circus City. Thank you, Madam President.
I know it's not me. Mr. Navarre, is any further discussion from the council? Mr. Navarre.
William Navarre, 108 Medford Street, apartment 1B. I was just going to suggest that maybe you had the resolution to look into those headsets and so on that Counselor Carvialo mentioned. There's been a few times when, you know, a few people I know, usually senior citizens, uh, come here, they know I come here all the time, and they say, I can't hear a damn thing. And I say, well, there used to be over there, I saw people used to get these things, I don't know where they are now. Yeah, we don't know. So if we could just like look into that, and if they do, maybe just like, you know, have some things.
By law, they should be here.
They should be, and, but also, there should be something letting people know about them, what the procedure is to get them, et cetera. Because as of now, they aren't accessible, maybe you found them.
All right, thank you.
Sign's pretty small, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
The sign's near the door, yeah.
Come on, William. As Counselor Knight would say, you can't even cross the road anymore.
Well, I guess we could just, there's a tiny sign in the back of the chamber, so.
There's accessibility issues with the sign, yeah.
Can't even read a sign, William, it's just big.
So I guess if we could just make that more clear to everybody, including the members of the council, how that works, so we can help, help different members of the community here, what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, if you can pass that along in the audience when people ask.
We've been here for eighteen years, I can realize we have a sign.
Any further discussion?
Just, I was gonna, I was just gonna move to.
We have to vote on this.
Oh, sorry.
So.
I was just gonna place, move to place this under reports due deadlines and invite the facilities manager to a future meeting.
Great idea, second that.
On the motion of Vice and Bears, seconded by Counselor Scarpelli, all is in favor. All is opposed, motion passes. Sorry, Vice and Bears, I thought you wanted to move around.
Nope.
Move around the agenda.
Let's go, Celtics are losing, I'm bummed.
Oh, yeah.
It's over anyway, glad we missed it.
Two three dash three zero zero, offered by Counselor Carvialo. Be it so resolved that the members of the council have the administration look into complaints about residents and businesses putting mail for various departments into the mailboxes outside the hall, then not being delivered to the proper department, sometimes causing residents to pay additional fees, Counselor Carvialo.
Thank you, Madam President. Over the past probably two or three weeks, I've been receiving calls from residents who are, and businesses who are saying that they're putting in their forms and applications for things, and people are paying their tax bills in those boxes outside the door. And some of them, they're saying that they're not getting to where they're supposed to be, and people are even having to pay late fees because of that. So I don't know who picks up the mail or, is there, is there a process on how that mail gets delivered? Mr. Clerk, maybe you would know?
I believe each department has a key to their individual mailbox and they check it.
So do they go there every day and check it?
I don't know the answer to that one.
Well, if, say, if, if we could find out who's responsible for getting the mail, and I would say, and when the resident, you know, when a resident gets a late fee because, because the bill has been sitting, their checks have been sitting in the box for three days, it's not fair to them, and the people in different departments are just refusing to waive them. So if that's something we can look into and find out what the process is to how that mail gets delivered.
Thank you, Counselor Carvialo. Any further discussion? On the motion of Counselor Carvialo, and the clerk is going to look into it as well, seconded by Vice and Bears, all is in favor. All is opposed, motion passes. Two three dash three zero one, offered by Counselor Carvialo. Be it so resolved that the Medford City Council be provided with an update by the building commissioner on the progress or lack thereof at 551 Winter Street, Counselor Carvialo.
Madam President, is the building commissioner still on?
He was on earlier, but he did not stick around. I forgot we had this paper, so.
For those, for those of us who traverse that area over by the high school, we call it the hole in the rock there. I think that project's been going on for eight years, or longer.
Yeah, it started under Melvin.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's been going on forever. But Madam President, what's, you know, I got calls from people this week saying, you know, blasting is still continuing. They're not getting any notifications. But what I've learned over there is that has turned into a rock quarry. All they're doing is selling rock out of there. So they, are they paying taxes? I mean, they're operating, they're operating a rock business out of that hole in the ground for the last four, five, six, seven years. So I, I want a report from the building commissioner. How, how long is that building permit going to stay open for?
Yeah. Well, they don't even have a building permit.
Well, they have some kind of permit to do something, I don't know what they're doing. But those people, they're operating a rock quarry business because all they're doing is selling rock out of there, and that's not what it was supposed to be. So if we can get some kind of report to the building commissioner, is that allowed for them to continue? And how long is, is that, is their process going to stay open before there's actually going to be a house built there?
Yeah. I did talk with the developer when they started blasting again.
You live over there.
Yeah, I live over there, I felt it, and I was pretty livid that, you know, we had had this, we had established this communication pathway to get these texts when we were going to get blasting, we heard a blast. Apparently the reason was for that was because they're using a different blasting company now. So the previous blasting company was who was sending texts. The new company didn't know that was a thing, so the developer, actually, I asked them to, the developer started personally sending texts to that list again and emails to that list again. I was told that, I already forgot, I think Monday was the last day of their blasting. I know they started blasting again because they hit some more rock they didn't anticipate, so I don't know if that's just going to happen again. It's funny thing about blasting out ledge, there tends to be more ledge underneath, like it's not.
That's a normal idea.
It's going to be a surprise.
A region built on ledge.
Yeah, my house is on ledge.
But Madam President, they're operating, they're operating a rock quarry business over there.
Yeah, and I didn't know that.
That shouldn't be, is it allowed? Are we, are we, are we getting any taxes for all the, all the, all the rock that they sold out of there?
City should be getting twenty percent of the rocks at least.
Yeah.
We need those rocks.
Yeah, so if we, if we can get a report from the building commissioner, it'd be appreciated.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, and they did say, the developer said they were hoping to start actually building in June. But again, I did hear from Director Hunt that they don't have a, they haven't, they don't have a building permit yet, so there's a few different things moving. So on the motion of Counsel, or any further discussion? Just Counselor Carvialo and I are having a discussion. On the motion of Counselor Carvialo, as amended by Counselor Carvialo, seconded by Vice and Bears, all is in favor. All is opposed, motion passes. Two three dash three zero two, offered by Counselor Carvialo. Be it so resolved that the Medford City Council review and discuss a moratorium for zoning and development on Mystic Ave and other identified locations until the zoning process is complete, Counselor Carvialo.
Thank you again, Madam President. I put forward this resolution with the intent of encouraging smart growth in Medford. Wasn't so much for the moratorium, but what we're seeing is community around us maximizing their zoning, zoning, allowing for the best use of their main corridors, while we in Medford are behind everyone else. The council has repeatedly asked the mayor and their administration for funding to complete the zoning processes that we started, so we can grow and grow smarter. We want our businesses to provide good-paying jobs and investments in our community. And for this, we'll bring new revenue streams to the city that we desperately need. If we continue on the way we are today, we will allow Medford to remain sedentary, continuing to invite used car lots, body shops, and that add little or no value to our city. Getting tired of the leftovers from other communities. I want to see Medford be considered for investments the same way Sumble, Everett and Walden are. So, Madam President, I would make a motion that we send this to the Business and Economic Development Subcommittee for further discussion.
Thank you. Counselor Seng.
I totally agree with the sentiment of it. I think it, you know, smart growth is super important. And to make sure that we're doing our developments right is, I think, very important. I mean, Mystic Ave, we all know, is super touchy as well. I happen to live close enough where talking to my neighbors, there's a wide, wide range of opinions about what we should do there. My only concern is with the word moratorium. I am just, I just think it's maybe too blunt of an instrument, of a word to put in. You said that it's less about the moratorium, more about the intent of it, which I support. I just wonder if you'd be amenable to.
Yeah, maybe the word moratorium, maybe I shouldn't have put the word moratorium in there, but.
But devices, maybe like.
But the intent is, we just can't let this continue to go on and just keep taking everybody's leftovers yet. That's all we get. These businesses are being chased out by other communities. That's all we get. These businesses are being chased out of other communities because, because they're buying the property and putting up smart growth and wig and all the crap is coming here.
Right. I mean, it really underscores the need for us to do another round of rezoning as fast as we can.
We spent a lot of time zoning, codifying the rules. We asked for the, but the most important part was the actual zoning. And what are we, a year and a half now? We're still waiting for the funding so we can do the actual zoning.
Um, I, I would just wonder if you'd be amenable to, maybe instead of moratoriums, say-
I'll take the word moratorium out of there.
Um, just, I mean-
I'd be happy to take the word moratorium out of there.
Um, tools for smart zoning, maybe something like that.
Fine. That's fine.
Vice President Bears.
Thank you, um, Madam President. And, uh, you know, we, okay, I'll address the substance and I'll address the larger, the larger thing that we're working on. My suggestion is just because I'm not on the Subcommittee, just to put it in your ear to those who are on the Subcommittee, I'm pretty sure I'm not on the Subcommittee.
You're not.
Um, okay. Um, is, uh, a great way that we can maybe do this fast is look at the use table and say, we're not going to allow these uses in C1, C2, and I districts anymore. Like no new body shops, no-
Well, currently, they're allowed by right.
Right, but we could, we could adjust the use, something we could do quickly in the zoning is just change the use table and say no. And then that would be an effective moratorium on the things we don't want to see. And then it would still allow people to go through plan development or if they're buy right uses that we do like, to move forward on those. So that would just be my suggestion, since I'm not just getting my input in, since I'm not on the Subcommittee. I think that would be a really easy way to quickly, instead of going through the, the real meat of the zoning ordinance, just go to the use table, say, here are things that we don't want by right in these areas because we want to preserve these properties for potential better uses in the future. Um, on the zoning, um, we did have, I think, a good discussion a couple of weeks ago in April around the RFP. And we had all of that going out to really start having interviews with the consulting teams that are going to apply for the RFP for zoning this summer and start kicking off the real zoning work in September. And the way that we wrote it is that, um, you know, it's not just we're going to spend two years on something and pass something at the end. It's that we're going to work on different issues and try to pass things as we move through the process. Some things may be bigger and take longer time. Some things may be low hanging fruit that we get at right away. So I am really hopeful that we will be able to engage on that quickly on, on the larger process. But I agree with the sentiment here and I think there are certainly uses that are currently allowed by right that we don't need new, new versions of on property that could eventually be used for much better things in the community. So I thank you for putting this forward.
Counselor Scarpelli.
I think Counsel President, thank you. Counsel Singh, Counsel Bears, but I think that, appreciate Counsel Carvial to bring this, this motion forward because I think that what he's seeing, uh, because he is a counselor that's been in the forefront of smart development. And I think that's what's key. I think that, um, you find developers going to Counsel Carvialo and talking to him because he has an open mind and he understands that to move the city forward, we have to look at the smart development. And I think that what scares me is you see businesses, uh, big plans that have been put out, um, for, I mean, we'll use CHA, the process that they were going to build, uh, the site of Century Bank is now falling through, I heard. And what that would leave us is, um, boy, wouldn't that be a great new car dealership added on that block? And by right, that's what we're allowing. So I understand Counselor's, uh, Counsel Carvialo's, um, um, aggression when he talks about a moratorium and I appreciate the, the fear of moratorium and the, uh, open mindedness to say, okay, let's not look at that, but also look at, uh, let's change that word, but also look at the dire need of making sure that, like Counsel Bear said, is understanding, getting that process in place and looking at our zoning as we go, looking right away. I think that's a great idea that Counsel Carvialo can sit with the, our Subcommittee and look at specific areas that we see right now are, you know as well as anybody, where they're ready to pounce and look at those rules and come back to a committee of the whole meeting that we all work together and look at those zones that we can, we can make some changes right now. Because I, I understand what you're saying because I think the residents, like Counsel Singh said, they're a little nervous because they haven't had opinions. The whole idea that we're excited about why it's, why, what we've talked about in very important meetings, we talk about the zoning consulting coming in. The key is bringing in a team that's going to work with the community to set up meetings to get the ideas of every sep, every community separately. Just like I remember working in Sembol 15 years ago, being part of the Recreation Department, sitting on this community meeting saying, this is going to happen in Union Square. What are we going to, what's recreation going to look like if we do this development in Union Square? And having the neighbors' input. So I, I'm excited about this process. But I appreciate Counsel Carvialo. This is, I think, a very important resolution for the fact that if we don't make a move soon or quickly, and obviously, we're not getting the support from the, from the, from the city and the administration. I like that we can put our minds together, like Counsel Bears, Counsel Singh, and look at some avenues. I applaud that, uh, moving over to a Subcommittee and moving this forward so we can see some action right away, so we don't see this development that can come in and be, and stick there for the next hundred years without any movement and probably suffocate that area. Because it is, you listen, they tell you about the gateway of your community. That's a gateway. Mystic Ave, for instance, is a gateway. The Century Bank area is the gateway. This is which you come in.
Yep.
That could be a perfect site for mixed use area that we can really do some great things and bring in some real revenues to the city. But we don't hear anything. We don't see anything. All we see is failures because I get phone calls from people that were involved in that saying, hey, just a heads up, CHA's backing out. So I really appreciate Counsel Carvialo bringing this forward because this is probably one of the most important people, pieces that people don't realize of the growth of this community moving forward. When you talk about funding mechanisms, when you talk about lack of basic needs that we have, this is the new revenue that can help us fund that. So, thank you, Counsel. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Knight, I'm sorry, Counselors, well, Counselor Knight and then we'll go to Counselor Singh just because we've spoken already on it.
Um, Madam President, thank you very much. And, um, you know, as I'm reading this resolution, I'm thinking to myself that in effect, right now, we already have a moratorium on development. You know, we look around at the cities that are neighboring communities and we see what they're doing. And we see them passing Medford by. We see them passing Medford by. Everett, Walden, Sembol, Arlington, Cambridge, Belmont, Waltham, Revere. The list goes on. List goes on. Medford is no longer in the driver's seat. At one point in time, we were a community of firsts and now we're a community that follows. So when I sit here and I think about, you know, how we can fix the process and change where we're at, it brings me back to the old saying, uh, if you don't know what you stand for, you can't stand for anything. And, you know, we have a mayor here that runs on affordable housing. A mayor that says that her number one accomplishment was the inclusionary housing ordinance that I wrote. Um, she runs on affordable housing, says that that's her number one success. Yet, when the reality is, there are three affordable housing developments in this community that she fights and takes into litigation. So these are the things that I think Counselor Carvialo is talking about. It's a frustration because it's, don't do what, don't look at what I'm doing, just look at what I'm saying. Because we don't have a leader, we don't have a public administrator or municipal manager in the corner office. We have a social media influencer. That's what we have. Let's be honest. That's clear as day. That's clear as day. That's fact at this point. That's fact at this point. The city's falling apart. I'm going to go play rock, paper, scissors. I mean, come on. Enough's enough with this stuff. You know what I mean? Anytime something bad happens, there's a sign that says, Mom, I'm out in front of City Hall and people are taking pictures. So when I talk about the direction that this community is going in and I talk about what I think we need, the first thing we need is a municipal manager that knows what they stand for and where they stand. And then we need a vision for this community. And I don't think we have one of those either. So we can talk about all these consultants that come in and all, all the Collins Center and this contract and this consultant that comes in to create a vision for you because you don't have one. Or we can take the reins of this process. Because for the last 18, 16 months, two years before that, we've been ignored. We haven't been given the tools to succeed. And it, it shows because the city hasn't looked worse. The city hasn't looked worse. There's never been a partnership that's been this broken in this community in over four decades. And it shows because the community looks awful. So I thank the council for taking the initiative to put a difficult topic to discuss on the agenda. But I thank him for knowing where he stands and what he stands for. Because that's what this business is all about. All you have is your word in this business. That's the only thing that follows you around. In politics, the only thing you have is your word. If you're a person that keeps it, people keep you. If you're a person that doesn't keep it, the people get rid of you. The people aren't stupid. The people know what's going on in this community. And I thank the gentleman for bringing it up.
Counselor Singh.
Um, I just wanted to get firm language for the city clerk, um, on amending it. Um, so instead of a moratorium, I guess we, we should say revisions to the use table and other tools for smart growth.
Is that okay with you, Counsel?
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Carvial.
Uh, thank you. I'll just, well, a couple of last things. So, um, it's unfortunate, you know, um, one of the, one of the good things the mayor did, uh, was, was hire Victor Schrader as a, as a, as a director. And, um, unfortunately, uh, less than a year later, he's gone. So we're left, we're left with, we're left rudderless again. And that, and that's a big problem. And, and when you hear from developers, that's one of their concerns. That, you know, they, they started working with him and where is he now? He's gone. Working in another place. So, uh, and we're spending money in courts. Uh, we'll take the Mill Creek project on 4,000 McFife Ave, three years in court when we knew we were going to lose on day one and we didn't get any more negotiations out of them than we would have got on day one. So that's three years of taxes that we've lost. That building should have been up and built today and people living in there now. You have to put the project on the Fells Way with Davis Group, another two to three years. No wonder why KP Law loves it here. They're just running that bill and it's running and running and running. And, you know, we, we got a estimate of $450,000. I, I don't know where that number came from, but we're, we're fighting that group. Again, another group, negotiate where you can get, housing could have been built there. We, we keep talking, but we don't have our housing. Even with those two projects, we're not even going to hit our 10% affordable housing now because now the one on Mr. Gavin, you pulled out. And we, and we just lost a $243 million project on Boston Avenue that left town. Another, another $6 million in taxes. This is the reason we're behind the eight ball and everything. So again, something's going to be done. Uh, you know, uh, I, I know there's Ryan to hire a new, uh, Economic Development Director, but by, by the time the person gets here, uh, you know, uh, the ship is going to be sailed and businesses are just going to continue to keep walking away.
Thank you.
Madam President, uh, thank you very much. I think it's important to point out also that this community needs at least, I'd say, one and a quarter to one and a half percent of new growth annually just to sustain, just to sustain, just to stay even. We need one and a quarter to one and a half percent of new growth each year, just to sustain. So when we talk about a project, like the Boston Ave project, that was going to bring an influx, an influx of money through taxation, through permitting, and more importantly, through the creation of jobs that pay a living wage, jobs that provide benefits for their employees, jobs that provide health insurance for their employees, jobs that aren't a car dealership, or a Dunkin' Donuts, or a nail salon, or a bank, which Medford's the capital of, I think. Because I mean, I think, what do we have, 27 Dunkin' Donuts in the city?
There were 20.
There were 20, or at least 20 Dunkin' Donuts in the city of Medford. That, that's our business model. That's our business model. But we have a property owner that comes before this council and asks us to support his project. He comes with representatives from the administration. We support the project. We give him the zoning. We carry him on our shoulders out of here like it's a big boom. He goes before the Historical Commission and they blow a $400 million project up over a garage that sits in the back of button train tracks that's falling apart and decrepit. And their analysis, their analysis that they used was totally outside the scope of their authority in the ordinance. The Historical Commission is just one of many commissions that we have in this community, but it is out of control.
All right, can you-
Out of control.
Take it back to-
Out of control. Well, it is. It comes back to smart growth and smart development. We can't grow and we can't develop smartly if our boards and commissions don't share a vision with the administration. And if the administration doesn't know where they stand or what they stand for, there's never going to be that shared vision. And that's where we are right now. That's what happens after three and a half years and no leadership. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So on the motion of Counselor Carvialo, as amended by Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Scarpelli, all those in favor?
I-
To refer to Subcommittee, um, Business, um, Business Development. Yeah, there's a cultural arts in there. Yeah. Business cult, yeah. Business, cultural arts and economic development. It'll get there. Um, all right. Um, all those in favor?
I-
All those opposed? Motion passes. Two, three dash, zero nine one, uh, three cases from the mayor, resubmitted. A request for a subpoena from Law Department claims over $1,000 to account 0101515762 to April 25th, 2023, to President Nicole Morrell and honorable members of the Medford City Council from Brianna Longwood, current mayor. Claimant name, USAA Casualty Insurance Co., Constance White. Um, date of accident, March 8th, 2018. Date of settlement, March 27th, 2023. Date of trial result, unapplicable. Amount of request, $3,450. Claimant's attorney, Clerk in Sinclair and Mafu's LLP. Description of alleged claim. The claimant Casualty Insurance, the USA, the claimant, USAA Claimant, um, Casualty Insurance Company, um, Constance White seeks compensation for a claim paid to their insured for property damage suffered when a Medford firetruck struck the side of an insured vehicle while parked on Sturgis Street in Medford, Mass. on or about March 8th, 2018. The necessary release has been obtained from the claimant. Breakdown of amount requested, medical costs, zero, loss wages, zero, property damage, $3,450. Others, zero. Total settlement, $3,450. Counselor Knight.
Madam President, this was a paper that was before us previously and the administration had submitted it erroneously. There were a number of typographical errors that we asked for clarification. It's come back clarified. Um, Ms. White's been waiting five years for her money. I think it's time we give it to her. Um, so I move for approval.
On the motion, do you have something?
Yeah, just want to say, you know, we should probably be receiving more than one of these every quarter. And this is the first one we've seen in a long time and that's about years old. So, um, that's it. I just, you know, there should be more of these coming through and they're not coming down from the law office. And one of the reasons is that we don't have a law office, except for Janice, who's working very hard. So thank you.
On the motion of Counsel Knight, seconded by, uh, Vice President, Counselor Carvial. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President, yes. Counselor Carvial, yes. Counselor Collins, absent. Counselor Knight, yes. Counselor Scarpelli, yeah. Counselor Singh-
Yes.
President, we're out.
Yes. Six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, uh, one absent. The motion passes.
Yes.
On the motion of Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Scarpelli, all those in favor?
I-
All those opposed? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.